I might call out if any board sent by this meeting to order. Uh, Mr. Bradford, would you lay this in prayer for me?
Yeah, I know what I'm saying. So, the thought is, Father, we thank you, God, this morning. We just want to thank you, God, for allowing us to see another day. And, Father, we just carefully ask these prayers in your precious name, oh, God. Father, continue to bless our elected officials. Continue to keep them from hurt, harmed, or danger. Father, continue to keep them, give them wisdom, oh, God, from Ohio. And, Father, we want to pray, oh, God, for our first responders. Pray for our schools, our young kids. Continue to protect them, oh, God. And, Father, we just want to pray for peace. And, Father, we just ask, oh, God, that you continue, oh, God, to bless the families that may have lost loved ones throughout this community. Continue to comfort them, oh, God. And, Father, we just ask to give and keep your name all on the prayer list, oh, God, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And you would please place the flag.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I call all two brothers, Gray.
Here.
Sent by the Hudson's. Two brothers, Wilson, here. Two brothers, Gaines. Fifty-five, age Dean. Chancery clerk Randy Lewis.
Present.
More than thirty, Scott Slaver, here. County magistrate, Randy King.
Here.
And I am present as well. This time, I need a motion to approve the documents. Motion by supervisor Wilson, three seconds. Second by supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Next on the agenda, city government business, if any. Move on, gonna go into departmental reports.
Good morning, how's everyone doing?
Morning.
All right, the first thing I have is a request for training from November the twenty-eighth through December the second. To what? Uh, to Biloxi. I forgot. They just called us over there quick, was training in the office. No, to Biloxi, um, that's, uh, November twenty-eighth of December the second. And, uh, he had requests for paperwork.
I think I have the paperwork here, uh, of Mr. Johnson and, uh, training in Biloxi, two ninety-one, ninety-two. Motion by supervisor. Hudson, second by supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, the next thing I have is veterans outreach, uh, Thursday, November the tenth, twenty-twenty-two. It's gonna be at the Lewis Dunn and Safe Room, and the address is three twenty-three Liberty Row. From ten a.m. to three p.m. Vendors will be on site, and this is the turkey giveaway that we're doing this year. All veterans must have DD two fourteen. That's the reason that, uh, Randy is going to be there because when, um, they pass away, it's a hard time trying to find a DD two fourteen to get them buried out in the national cemetery. And, um, we've had problems, so, uh, Randy's gonna have someone from her staff there to help, to take the DD two fourteens and get them put on file.
What's the date again?
November the tenth. That's on the Thursday, that's the day before veterans stay. All right, they must have DD two fourteen. There's no else, there's no buzz. I ain't even calling nobody to verify that you're veteran. The very first year we did it, we, I stayed on the phone constantly with Jackson trying to verify that. They must have their DD two fourteen. The days are seventeen, they have thirty days to get their DD two fourteen. And come to the office, but if they not from here, they gotta go to San Luis. So, you, they have thirty days, and we can get them back in thirty days to get their DD two fourteen. Also, ladies-
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what, what are you doing to get yourself information out to make sure that the veterans-
Okay, the flyer just is going out today. The flyer's going out today.
Where is it going?
I do like I do every year, drive around to the businesses and walk up main street and pass them out to everybody. And then I go by the radio station. The gentleman, um, I don't know the one that's late, um, he, he announces it. So, the people come on the morning time, they announce it. And, um, I've already been in contact with the Democrat. I emailed Mr. Warren, and he'll be getting with me to do an interview to the secretary.
Let me ask you a question. Do you have a list of veterans in this command?
I'm not privy to that information.
Okay.
That would have to, that'd be something that Congress would have to authorize to give to us.
I'm talking about the ones that just come to see you. You do have a list of them?
Yeah.
So, do you do a mail-out or something to those? Uh, they got to listen at the radio or the, uh, newspaper, whatever, pay that day?
Uh, nobody ever asked me to create a mail-out list.
I'm just trying to make sure that-
Trust me. The word is getting out. The word is getting out, trust me. I, I ain't even put the flyer out. People been coming by the office. Miss Jones, when I heard you giving out, she said, yes, I am this year. Yeah, this is getting out.
I spoke with the other things, too.
Okay, I'm, I'm getting to that part.
Okay, I got, I got a veteran calling me this morning, and, and, uh, he's dead pretty. So, how would he, uh, get his-
Who is the veteran?
James Davis.
Miss Davis. I still got Miss Davis' telephone. I still got Miss Davis.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, and it's for Adams County veterans only. Uh, the first year that we did it, we gave out about six hundred turkeys. And, um, this year is solely for Adams County veterans only. And I'm stressing that, you know, but I helped Adams County find a safe home then, you know, by my own team, problems up there.
So, they were had to have IDs, is that what you said?
Yeah. They, if they go to the VA, they have an ID. They have these documents, but they just won't get up and do what they have to do. You can tell them, beat them over head, hey, you need to take that DD two fourteen, go over there, transfer it to her. No, be, I said, the ladies have put it on the book for you. They die, I told your husband to take it out there, but they won't do it. So, I talked with Randy, she agreed to it, and I think this is where, you know, you're gonna pull three hundred people out of their house on November the tenth. So, every DD two fourteen that is not on file at her house, she'll have somebody there to take it and do what needs to be done. Facebook. The Facebook page is, uh, what we're gonna do also on November the tenth, they're gonna have to fill out a form and give me their Facebook information. And once they give me their Facebook information, I have to send them a frame request in order to invite them as to be my friend, then to include them, uh, invite them to the Facebook page. But the Facebook page is of several people because they are, veterans are my friends on Facebook. They have, they found the page, and they've been, um, they've been on the looking, reading the material that's being uploaded on there. So, it is up, and it is going, but they have to fill out a form so I can get their information on them so we can add them there. And, you know, we, um, there are requirements, there are going to be restrictions, you know, in the group because we won't have nobody bashing anybody, talking about, well, what's not going on, what's not done in this area. So, if you start bashing people, they will be put out of the group, okay? Also, we're gonna have eight vendors, and that's including Randy. Um, I decided to do a little different than we did the first year because the first year, people just walked in and walked out. So, this time, I have the insurance because it is open and open for Medicare around this time of the start. So, I have two vendors there to talk to. They got some people from Eric Jones, they have, um, a lot of lists in the office. So, it's, it's eight vendors there also. And also, they'll pick up from me a little bag, um, with some things that people have donated in the community. Um, for that, and I want to thank Rita Schick, you know, she has, uh, really been working with me and Heather, and picked some things together. So, um, they'll be able to pick up a bag. They'll also be able to pick up their form where they'll be able to go on Friday, which is eleven, which is better say. All the places that are giving discounts, and I still have to get that, uh, a couple of restaurants. They said they were gonna think about it, had to talk to management, so, and get that with me, and they'll be able to pick that form up also from me on, um, Thursday. That's it.
I have a request before we kick anyone off of the Facebook group. That's to get, take a look at it before we do that.
Yeah, let me get a good idea, way, 'cause, uh, me, uh, we always get certified. Just gonna kick them out of this, some period of the bag, but, uh, Mr. President, uh, the offices out there, they have for the veterans, are you gonna give them a flyer?
I, wait, I'm not going out in the rain today. I'll probably start tomorrow, cause it's not raining. Going around some businesses like I do when I have events, I go to each business and put flyers out, get them to the secretary, they got Baltimore, this is why I'll do it. And at night, when the churches are meeting, I go by the churches on Wednesday night and drop off flyers to everybody. And they are responsible to get it to their announcer for them to put it out.
Yeah, I'd like to have one.
Anybody else have any questions?
I made, I said, this, what are the times for it?
Ten a.m. to three p.m.
Ten to three.
You email us one, two, so we can post this here, we got a lot of pictures.
I'm praying one, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
All right.
Departmental reports, sir.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the E nine-one-one calls from October first through the seventeenth so far. We have volunteer fires week six. The police department was six eighty-nine. Uh, the sheriff's office, I'm sorry, the sheriff's office was Tuesday week. The police department was six eighty-nine, and the fire department was seventeen, called so far.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. Brad Bradford, Adams County Sheriff. You got a couple of things. I want to let everybody know, uh, this week, it's severe prepared this week, severe weather prepared this week. You know, October nineteenth, which is Wednesday, we're gonna have a county-wide tornado injury, so we want to make sure everybody participates in that. We're gonna be at zero nine fifteen. So, we'll set outside, we'll send out everything, cold reds. Uh, help the paper Democrat to put something in there. So, cause like I said, we want to make sure everybody participates. Want everybody to, you know, uh, take this drill seriously because we getting into that false weather. Um, also on that, um, what do the board, what we want to do about the safe room challenge? I know we, we getting a lot of bees, and they was coming up kinda high, so we gonna have to do something because we gonna have to have showers.
Um, I was at a conference this weekend in Dallas, and, uh, my partner on the deal, he's got a friend that they build showers, but basically the same thing Wes, you and I talked about, about of the stadium out there. Um, and he's gonna give me some prices on those. These were trailer mounted, but, but they didn't make them where we could just set them on the ground, you know, on slab, and all we gonna do is support up to them, put the drains up, and look like they're a pretty good system. But I, I'll know more about that later in the week.
Okay. The, uh, what he's referring to is Kevin and I, and Scott met, I went two weeks ago with the architect that we're working with on Liberty Ballpark, Chester, Westfield. And he has done some projects where they have built restaurants out of shipping containers. So, as we move forward, that might also be something we can get, probably, from them as well.
Yeah, cause like what I'm afraid of is, you know, once the high school is built, I think the cities, I don't know what they're gonna do with the stack of building right there. So, if they, you know, that's our only place we have showers at, where we have access to. Uh, so if they take that away from us, we gonna be dead in the water there, uh, as far as making that a shelter. So, just give everybody a heads up, they won't be able to make it a shelter because we can't, you know, have people shower.
Brad, I made sure R and D, that needs to put in.
We need four, you know, two, two male and two female. So, we gotta, like I said, we gotta make sure one is ADA, who are being compliant, so we can do this.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Scott, I want you to reach out to the city because, uh, one time, they was thinking about turning that into a workforce development center with the city and the county.
Absolutely.
I don't know where we all went there, but, uh, just check availability and will we still be able to utilize the place for people to go take a shower?
I think it's probably the school we need to check with because it's more than just a safety.
And make sure all on the same page.
Okay. Uh, my office is big, this is Paul, so hope you're stuck to Superbad. I know a lot of people watching the Ukraine stuff, and they worried about the nuclear power plants and, uh, things of that nature. So, uh, we got some calls in the office, a couple of elderly citizens, they are concerned. So, I think we did send some to the Democrat. Stickers know that, you know, Adams County do have a plan, the state do have a plan, and we can assure that, you know, we train on this. Uh, that's why we sent people to school to make sure, because in a nuclear event, you only get one time to do a ride. So, we make sure that, um, we are, we're head and gang, and we're sending out any information, any event we have, anything that happened that ran up. Uh, we also, this year, we just got partnership, uh, with River Bend, kind of St. Francis Bend. So, we, you know, we're covering both ways, cause we don't want people panicked. You know, a lot of times, they see stuff on TV, then, you know, we sit between two nuclear power, you know. I guess you can be, you know, worried, you know, but, uh, I assure that, you know, they're safe. Uh, we do have protocols in place to, you know, help any event, we had to evacuate, uh, during that time. Uh, we can put that information out, but we don't want to just put it out to everybody because that's our secure plan that we have.
Could you put it out to us?
As far as what, the plan? Yeah, I have a couple of plan, I can give it to you.
Yeah.
Okay. But we don't like, we don't want to put that into the community, you know, so we don't want people to start, you know, panicking and stuff like that, going and getting gas and buying gas mask suits and stuff like that, so, yeah, but I can get that out to you. Uh, last thing, I want to request travel for Connie Mason and Scott Erwin. They going to send the GSI mapping training, uh, for our mapping system here. Uh, it's gonna be in Pearl, uh, November the second to the third at Newland.
So.
Did you read out the form?
Yeah.
You got it.
I agree with you.
I'll bring the headline up.
I'm on the second.
The third.
Third.
All right, forms filled out and signed for both, uh, hundred eighty-seven dollars each. You heard the request. Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
That's all, I have to finish this question. Thanks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just have a few things. Uh, this week, Monday, tonight, yeah, tonight, Tuesday, and Thursday, we have regional fire class for the state fire academy for the volunteers from six o'clock, six p.m. to ten p.m. at the safe room. And also, uh, on October twenty-ninth, that's the last Saturday, we're gonna be doing, uh, trick of trunk and also open house over at the safe room from nine to one. So, we're gonna bring all the props out, do fire extinguisher training. Uh, we gonna have a live fire out there also, so we have to demonstrate how to put fire alarms and all that, and people want to join in on that they can. And we are taking names now for smoke alarms. We waiting on the state to get them in, but, uh, I know they've been saying on the radios, but we haven't got them in yet. So, but we are taking names to get smoke alarms to. So, once they come in, we start putting, putting our smoke alarms at our residence. That's all I have.
Right, Derek. Brad. Rob.
Good morning, board. First thing I have, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Gray last week on the, uh, camera location out in, uh, the county, around the Old Country Club Drive area. We have a lot of littering problems out there. Lady called almost twice a week, mattress cows, I mean, it's a big problem. Uh, we put our trail cameras there, we get picture, you know, script for vehicles, things, people, but, you know, no tag, things like that. So, it's nothing this year can really do until we getting my tag number. Uh, but I spoke with down the lumber across the street there, uh, about their internet service in that area. They're having some issues theirself with, um, some vandalism, some big, putting fire hydrants on, things like that, leaving them running. So, I think that could be avenue we could use, uh, to have two locations, Old Country Club and that location there. People going in and out there. Um, I guess I can get the information to the sheriff's department, definitely to the board. You know, I guess if they want to get a camera in that area, whatever, to bring it to go up, we do have a lot of problems in that area as far as littering and things like that, so.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, as soon as we cleaning out that area over there, the next couple of days, they bringing couches and all kinds of stuff over there. And, um, really, the only secure thing that we gonna have in near future out of the count, uh, for a load with, I know it sound crazy, but those NOLA cameras gonna have to be in a whole lot of areas to help law enforcement and everybody else do their job. Cause, uh, you know, seeing like crime going up, people not talking, they not saying nothing. And if you got one of those NOLA cameras, I think it'll help alleviate a whole lot of problems in it, you know. Cause when I go other places, that's all they say, we got a camera here, we got a camera here, we got, they got cameras everywhere now. So, it's, it's gonna get to the point where Massachusetts and Adams County are gonna have to have cameras. I'm sorry to say it, but we need it. Maybe those cameras can save some lives, too. Thank you, Mr. President.
Before you move on, supervisor, can I say something on the camera? It's a, it's a grant. Let me stand up. I ain't gonna take the time, no, stay right, I'm mistaken. I want you to stay right there, cause I don't wanna take the time, I just wanna say this on the cameras. It's a grant that the city of Massachusetts, county of Adams, uh, Concordia, Amity, all went in. And there's, there's some things happening right now that need to be discussed, and need to be brought to y'all attention. But in those cameras, we had a certain number of camera, cameras also in there that they were paid for, for the county. So, I'm suggesting whoever want to talk after this meeting, that's talking, look at this thing, or whenever y'all have time. Because we got, the grant is approved, so it's administered by the city. But it's four different groups involved in that who supposedly have got the cameras out of full project, though. So, just wanna bring that to the board's attention. Lose the jar for the city. Right now, it's the chief police. It's, it started on the Walton's front. It started on the Walton's. So, for all of us, uh, all four agencies are involved, and everybody got a certain amount of cameras they would, they are to get, and the money is sitting there, but it's, it need to be discussed.
Mr. President. Scott, could you, we got on here a city venue, we don't have none, could you set up something with the city? Cause we got more than just the cameras we need to be discussing.
Chairman, my president's. Like a mayor, here. Thank you. Thank you, James. You go over there, too?
I don't mind.
This is not first time that this here has come to reach out, and I've tried myself to. The normal rank person's not, it's not. It need to be discussed.
Next thing I have, board, uh, have employee that's, uh, moved on, took another position somewhere else. Uh, I'd like to ask the board, give me permission to advertise for a job named Jalen Urban. He was a mechanic's helper. Uh, he had called me, I spoke with him on the phone, he was supposed to go by HR and do a exit. I don't know if he did or not, but it's been a few weeks, uh, going on, but he has accepted another job. He is already working for them.
Do you want a motion to advertise?
To, you know.
His resignation.
His resignation and to advertise, but I don't have anything in writing. He had called me on the phone, I spoke with him, he was on HR, but he has took another position. I mean, I've texted him a couple of times, you know, so.
You heard the board. Motion by supervisor Gaines. Safe, by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Thank you. Um.
Excuse me.
What, what was the motion to?
To accept his resignation, is to give him that, advertise, uh-
You give both of them at the same day?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I have, uh, LPA class certification, and our certification expired October fourteenth. Expired, uh, myself, uh, I mean, me, Meg, Angie, and I think Ricky, we all went to the same class. I know they have an A webinar class, uh, on ten twenty-seven, uh, from eight to twelve thirty on Thursday, and from ten twenty-eight twenty-two from eight thirty to eleven thirty on that Friday. It's a two-day, uh, webinar. Got to, uh, sign up, and I was asking the board, uh, to give me permission for me and, uh, Meg to get me certified. I don't know if Angie and Ricky want to do it or not.
That ain't gonna help with me. I can't be open, man. So.
Is this, we're not including in this? All right, so the request by Mr. Collins to approve for Robbie, Meg, and Angie, too.
Where is it located?
It's wherever it's home, you have to do it.
Over in Long Lake?
Yeah.
You heard the request?
I didn't know.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? Not, all opposed? I said.
Okay, um, EWP, that was asked to ride with DKS, uh, and look at, uh, those sites. I picked Hayden up last week, rode him around, uh, every site that was asked to do. And he was supposed to email the board and myself, uh, report of what we had looked at, what needed to be done and things like that. But I see it's not. I guess, anyhow, uh, I did it with my heart. I did pick him up and rode him for about four hours. So, uh, that's all I can report on that.
He did email somebody this morning.
I-
He did. If you email him morning, saying sorry, he, he would be here shortly and saying that you and him, uh, rode the road.
He did.
Maybe he's coming.
Okay, he's coming? Oh. Okay. Next thing I have, it was four sites, EWP's, that was approved, uh, and it was two on Magnolia Bluff, uh, Lincoln Heights and a Low Water Bridge, uh, site that was approved. Um, I've been working on Low Water Bridge, just taking part of the road, it's an emergency. Been meeting with, uh, Mike Green, myself, uh, met with, uh, Mr. Ford and a contractor last week, uh, got some designs, brought up some things, and, uh, supervisor Gaines showed up, I think it was Thursday, we all met out there again. Uh, so we do have a plan, a price to get started. The price will increase as we go, uh, and the reason being is, it was a job, that lot worse than it was when we submitted it a couple of years ago. So, uh, I would like to let Mr. Ford speak just a second on that. Uh, I can finish my report and do it, move forward with that. But, uh, Midway Construction was the contractor, uh, that was selected to do the emergency project. The next thing I have, um, spoke with Mr. Godfrey with APAC last week. Um, we're still airing everything down. I did get a duty list, I'm gonna bring the price up, definitely.
Now, you, you gonna, you gonna come back?
Yeah, I'm gonna come back, just before it gets up here, he's gonna talk about the design and stuff, and we'll do that, too. I said, I did wrong. Uh, APAC, I gave them a list. And some of the roads is not matching up to our road, forest, how many miles, how many tents or whatever, so we narrowed that down. Uh, but APAC said they could probably start sometime next week or the next if we could go ahead and get it pared down to what we, what road we wanna select initially. I don't know where we at with the bond, what are we dealing?
How much, how much this week?
Yes, the validation will be on the twentieth, and at that point, the money be sent up. Uh, we're looking at a free validation closing sometime this week, but schedules permit. It was pretty scheduled on Wednesday, and might as well do it, um, the present that, but this is.
Mr. President, I got a question. Uh, on this list, uh, how, how we gonna do with Morgantown Road? Cause on this list, I see a blank.
And, 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 you know, we went over this one time before that we discussed early on when I had Morgantown had it that blank there. That I didn't know how the board would elect to do, were we gonna take any of the bond money and do any of Morgantown Road? Or were we gonna wait and apply for stormwater grants or whatever, like Mr. Slower was mentioning to the board? I know we got the two point four million.
That's for all the roads?
Say again?
Is that for the whole road, uh?
No, but when I say Morgantown Road, that's what I had put in that section because we had discussed, we didn't know how we were gonna fund that issue when we really originally started this.
Well, I'm looking at this four-year road plan, and it's part of the four-year road plan. And if we don't do nothing else, we need to cut the, uh, overlay part portion up there and make it part of the bond. Cause, cause that's where it needs to come from. Where else it gonna come from?
So you say the nine tenths of mile of what we doing on that project, the overlay part?
Uh, portion, cause you know the city gonna pay their portion for the oh point five, and we got oh point four, we got the oh point five. So that portion needs to come out the bond.
I guess that's something. The board, and I'm listening up here, I'm writing it down. I should be writing, uh, five tenths of miles.
I mean, my thing is this, every other project we have done in this county. We always getting money for it, it's no problem. And Morgantown Road is a, uh, project that this board approved, the law was to get money for. We got money from the federal government, and I, I, is it a problem for us to get the money from the bond issue to get our portion? That's what the city doing. They getting their money from their portion of their bond issue. So what, what, what's so different about this?
Well, you know, we see how that money comes from state for the road and bridges, and I don't know where that's going. We talking about that. I don't know where we at with that money. Joe used to put that within our, when we could do our budget, he would have it in there. So I, we could go back and get money from it, and I, I don't know where are we at with that, and how much have we receiving on that?
You talking, you talking about? Well, I brought that up a while back, and, and, uh, I don't, I don't know what it was. I thought we was gonna use that for something else. If we gonna use them for Morgantown?
No, I, I'm just asking question for what? I don't know what you said.
I thought you said we couldn't use that and match it with. Can we use that money for Morgantown Road?
The use tax?
Yeah.
It's for road bridges.
Roads and bridges.
It's for road bridges.
Okay, we got that money and the, and bond money?
Much money is in that?
The use tax money is the bond money. So we're borrowing against future use tax money. That's how they write it on the bond.
Okay.
So that's how you pay the debt back when we're bonds and use tax?
Okay. So, this is pretty conservative projection, so actually additional use tax money that we give mostly sales tax. It's only increasing like you expect it to, so. But yeah, your use tax money, you're basically, you got a ten-year appropriation of get use tax money. And I think one or two years has been done, and so we're going ahead and borrowing what we project we'll get and using the use tax money to, to pay that. And you go on you. But it has a narrow wide discretion in which you can use use tax money for, but it's gotta be within roads and bridges.
I, you, y'all remember we bringing that up a long time ago?
What's that?
The use tax money.
I think I, I thought I brought it up, but.
I brought it up a long time ago. So what is our portion that we need to pay for Morgantown Road?
Right, and I sent out an email with a spreadsheet that, that breaks it down. For the earmark portion, we need a, a twenty percent match. So this two point four million dollar earmark, the local match has gotta be six hundred thousand dollars. Local, the, the city has agreed to do that sixty forty. So you're looking at roughly three hundred and sixty thousand if the estimate is right. Sometimes they're right, sometimes they're wrong, um, but that's, that's what we know as far as the money need.
So is that all we need for Morgantown Road?
The, or it's phase one.
Phase one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what about phase two?
For phase two, that the remaining project is estimated at one point seven million dollars. If we use the, uh, stormwater grant, that requires that you use your AARP money. And that gives you a one-to-one match, in which case we would need a hundred and fifty thousand local money. Our portion of that would be eight fifty times, let's see, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Together, your total amount should be around eight hundred and seventy thousand to get Morgantown Road. Which is a pretty good deal for a project that size. Four point seven million dollars is what the estimate.
So it's coming out of the AARP money, the less you just said.
If, that you have the.
If we get the grant.
If you get, and the board then chooses to accept the grant, then that comes out of AARP. Yes, sir.
What do you want, man?
Yes.
The six hundred, the three hundred and sixty thousand?
Cannot come from any other source but local funds. So, you know, use tax money, you know, I'm sorry, can't come out of federal funds of any type.
Right.
If that makes sense, okay.
So I'm gonna make a motion that, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, on the four-year road plan, phase one. That we put that three hundred and sixty thousand dollars in for Morgantown Road.
Motion supervisor Gray, can you say?
Sir.
Same supervisor Dan, is there any discussion? Uh, Angie.
Okay.
Angie, is there any funds available right now on the use tax? Are there any remaining funds in that?
I thought to make the payments. So I'm, this was, I'm pulled off it because I was saying the use tax money was used to make the payments.
Starting immediately.
So I'm talking about the balance of the past. Is it depleted?
Uh, we have programmed that into actual your, every bridge funds.
Alright, um.
And, and when we did the estimate of the bond, we took out what we already programmed in from that use tax money. To keep, so that we'd lose road apartments, but.
The, uh, later today, I mean, now that's coming up time for it soon, and I expect to, but I was gonna make a motion later today. This is part of the discussion, by the way, uh, do we use that care of that money to pay off as much debt as we can down for the county? Now, I, I don't know exactly what the numbers would be, but I think, uh, the county would save somewhere between, uh, four, forty and fifty thousand dollars a month. By not having to pay the debt servicing bummer and the amount of interest that we're paying on the debt. I don't know, Angie, do you run any numbers on that?
My number, that is pretty shit. I'll send to you later.
Well. I, I get the, the number I don't know, I, I can, I can calculate the interest pretty good, but, uh, what I don't know is how much the debt service we would no longer have to pay. If we put five or six million dollars worth of debt. It'd be debt that would be wiped out, so we'd no longer have to pay it every month.
It must.
Well, how it works out. And the money we could save was more than paid for what the money you're talking about, um, using for Morgantown. Cause that money won't even be needed for another year or so, will it? Half of it might be.
Day one, but.
Yeah.
But.
Is that right?
Fifty thousand dollars a month, and that certainly would be half of the project, or twice the amount would, the motion on floors to pay.
So rather than pay interest on debt service that we already have for the next year, year and a half, two years, how long should I pay for Morgantown Road? Um, we pay our debt down, a big chunk of our debt down, uh, probably for the first time in the county's history. And, uh, we're not throwing money away. Um, and the money will build up fast, we'll have more money to use it for operations.
Mr. President. Well, I, uh, if, if we do the whole, I don't, I don't have a problem paying the debt down, but if we do, if I spend all that money paying the debt down, would that then affect us? The grant that you, uh, that you applied for, Scott, uh, hasn't been applied for with the one-to-one match? So you couldn't, so that'll lose the one-to-one match for the grant. That disqualified, right?
That is correct.
Yeah.
How, how much of the money do we need for the one?
Five hundred and ten thousand.
Well, we, we set aside the five hundred and ten thousand.
If we have to use our funds to match that.
And just hold those in reserve and take the rest of the money and pay down the debt. Can we do that?
Yeah. Can I say this, President?
Yes.
By attending conference and listen to other board members in other counties. When I offer money, and they don't get me wrong, that's a good idea, I pay down the debt. But they say that these conferences, I mean, this is a one-time funding. You won't see this funding ten years from now.
Or twenty.
Or twenty years from now. If you pay down debt, we not gonna see this money. It's, it's gone, and we say we're gonna be saving money, true enough, but that money gonna be spent too. So we not gonna even see this money. We want to be able to say, we was able to do this. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at other counties that don't do certain things with their money, that they can see ten, twenty years from now. We're not gonna see anything. We're not gonna be able to say what we did with this five point, uh, nine million dollars for paying down debt. And, and that money, we still gonna be spending money with the other costs that we save. So me personally, I'd like to see the money somewhere there that we can say we did something with. Or. That, that's what I like to see. I feel like that, and then give it back to the Morgantown project, uh, the motion that was just made. Yes, Morgantown needs to be done, and it can be done. But the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that needs to be a part of supervising grant funding.
We don't have no funding. We don't have, we in a unit system, you don't have no funding.
You don't have a work supervisor.
No, I don't. We don't have no funding.
I like to see that as a part of that.
It's part of the road?
It's a part of the road thing, but you don't have that work supervisor grant.
I do not know how that works. We don't have funding. That's why I made a motion to do it like this.
Just like Calvin and, and, uh, Wes is doing with their road.
When I'm, you got my lower local road, we splitting different.
Right, maybe different.
Angela, if I may.
You want to do the road?
Oh. My concern is the fact that we got five point nine billion dollars sitting there, and that if we let people come in here and they gonna die, must have dead. We're not gonna have anything to show for it. And I don't know if you got some big project in mind, uh, but, uh, the county's not in real good financial position. I mean, we're okay, but we're, I mean, when somebody comes in here and wants a dollar raised, we have to fight about it. We wouldn't have to do that anymore. Uh, if we had extra money, if we're not paying debt service down, Angie, I don't know if you wanna help me on this. Cause you are, you're the only one that actually knows.
Well, I'll find out.
How, how bad things are. These boards in the past, and, and, and I'm not talking just, you know, about you. Sometimes people don't understand, um, how business works, and this is a business.
Right.
And we should run it as such. And you can't keep borrowing money and, uh, keep paying debt all the time and then have a vibrant company. And we don't have a vibrant company right now. Um, and this is, we might not ever hit an opportunity like this to pay this debt down and put the county on a lot firmer ground.
Some further questions?
Yeah, um, one, one thing that we talked about in our last conference, Lieutenant, uh, Deborah Hogan said, like, oh, one of these things, we can do a, do a lot of one-to-one matches. On, on some of that money. That don't mean we have to give it away. Uh, but I mean, we need to probably take our priorities that we need to do. I don't have a problem paying some debt down, but I don't see what, why you have money that we might need. And then you got to spend it, you'll pay it off for the borrowed home money again. And then on the other thing with Morgantown Road, I'll just say this, cause I don't wanna get in a, um, any kind of shadow match. But we just, we just did a five million dollar bond for recreation. We also did, uh, we doing a road bond. But I, I don't understand the problem if you can take one point six million dollars out of a recreation bond. And that ain't money split. So that mean if you were splitting money, that each supervisor at the table will have a million dollar piece. So, and that's not the, that's not what we doing. We are making a decision as a board to make our county run better, to get the ball field. So I don't see where's the, what's the inconsistency of taking the money out of a road bond, that same bond. We running a unit system. In a unit system, roads, bridges, and parks are done not on every basis, on county-wide basis. So, you know, if we gonna fix the ball field out of one grant and take one point six million out, which is not a problem, I'm all for upgrading. Why can't we take it out, uh, why do we have to divide one equally and split it? But then you can take the other bond and take the money off the top, and it's not divided equally. Somewhere you need to be consistent. That's all I, I hear, so, Mr. President.
Mr. President. Uh, I, I kinda agree with what you saying, and I kinda agree with what you saying. Uh, I, I, I feel, excuse me. If we can do this both ways, we, we, we can take some of the money and pay down some of the debt. And we also can take some of the money and do some other things. I, I don't have a problem with paying down debt, cause a lot of this stuff is accumulated before I even got here. And I think we can use some of the money and pay down some debt and use some of the money that we gonna see for the next ten to fifteen years in our community. Help some people that really need to be helped. That's what I feel. And for the Morgantown Road, uh, supervisor Gaines, you, 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 you hit it on the point. And you, you can't explain it no better than that, because every other project we do, we fund the project. We don't sit here and ask about just because it's in a certain district. We worry about a certain district. We trying to move this county forward. We trying to get the redistricting going. And, uh, you supervisor Hudson, you, you recommended for Morgantown to be in District Four. And I ain't have a problem with it. I said, okay, I take four hundred and some people out of District, out of District Five and put them in District Four. But if y'all not gonna fund Morgantown Road, I would look like a fool doing that.
I don't know what, what you took out. I just know what, what I told, what street I said.
That four hundred and fifty people from District Four out of Morgantown Road, and I love the houses. But I wanted, I want this road to be funded with them four hundred, with a whole Morgantown Road. Can get exactly what they need. We shouldn't even be discuss, we shouldn't even be debating this.
We shouldn't even be debating Morgantown period, for Morgantown needs to be done, point blank. And it can, like I say, it can be done.
As far as the, uh, stormwater grant goes, we have to use our funds on that match to get it. So that, I'll see the issue there.
Right.
As one part of it.
Right.
Okay. So, uh, did you have anything you want to say? So, uh, did you have anything you want to say? So.
I was trying to hold the debt service money in.
Mr. President, I call for the question.
Uh.
I want to clarify before we move forward, Mr. Gray. So the five tenths of a mile of Morgan Town Road, the striping and the, and the asphalt, should come out the bond money, is that what I'm hearing? Is that what we're fixing about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars you're talking about?
Yeah. And and three hundred and sixty gonna do the whole thing, Scott?
Yeah, that's our first phase, but that's our first phase, but, uh, because the second phase would be five hundred and ten thousand, total be eight hundred.
Five hundred and ten coming from the on.
What I'm saying, the whole project is eight sev- eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, eight hundred. But the money we leave is three hundred and sixty thousand, is that what you say?
Yes.
Is that correct, uh, Mr. Engineer, Mr. Road Manager, I don't wanna make a mistake, I need to come back and ask for some more money.
That is possible depending on the ultimate bids on the project, it's just an estimate, could be that it's less. It's just engineer estimate, usually our estimates are fairly close, not always, but, but usually. And that's okay.
So, Mr. Lieutenant, I call for the question, he, how about that?
What's, what's?
Question answer?
What's the motion?
Say the three sixty from the bond money.
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? I said.
Okay.
Motion, President. Thank you.
All right, the next thing I have, uh, I'm gonna give to Mr. Gocher this week, uh, tell him we're gonna do some tweaking on it. Because I do, like I said, I had some tents and miles that didn't have, what he went out and looked at on the spreadsheet he had sent us too, so we're gonna get those corrected. Matter of fact, we emailed him Thursday with some corrections of them already, had heard back from him. Uh, and then I'll tell him after next board meeting, we should be able to.
So that may have to take precedence over some other things, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, okay, I wanna clear it up, thank you. Uh, Rackliff Road, uh, I wrote out the Rackliff Road, why since the last board meeting, was looking at the progress he was making, it's been some made, uh, I'd say it's been a lot made, but it has been some made, put some out, we picked up some, you know, stuff off the side of the road. Uh, tires, you know, I had mentioned that we would try to help since we get that tire grant, I don't see where the county can do that. He's probably got six to eight hundred tires out there and I don't know, we're, we're behind on picking our tires up. And Mr. Gaines probably see it at our site out there, they're running behind picking them up, we are overrun with tires already in the county. Uh, I just, that's left up to the board, but I just don't see how we can, I, I mean, they're not picking them up from us. You know, and, and what I mean by saying, saying six to eight hundred, but it's.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, don't they have a grant?
We, we do have a tire grant, but, but they're not picking them up, we're getting, they're not coming to pick them up, something's going on with them and it's been about six months on pickup. DQ knows all about it, I mean, they're involved, but we just.
So you mean they not picking up, when we pick up, then they not coming?
They're not gonna get it from the county, that's why I say our sites get full. So I don't feel like we put another six, eight hundred tires there, I mean, it'd take a whole parking lot at the convenience center.
Have, have you made a call to fan out?
Yes, we've been on the, we've been on the record, you know, trying to figure out why and, and it's.
So what she came up with?
That they're having trouble getting them, the heck of people is picking them up and then wherever they dispose of them, what they can do is like these rubber plant, running, shipping them, using them in that area, I don't know if that's slowed down or what, but, uh.
So what you trying to tell me, they give us a grant to pick up tires? Once we pick up the tires, then they not following up the major part of the deal?
Yeah, they're not picking them up.
They need to make some calls and somebody to plan out.
DQ, I mean, we called them all, that's what I say, they had, they just hadn't picked them up, I mean, we following up on it and they just hadn't picked up on it. But I mean, I guess they will, just like we followed up on, you know, we calling, checking on our ladders and hangers money, cause I mean, we got two hundred and sixty thousand.
So where do we put the tires at?
Where?
Yes.
I don't know.
You talking about the ones that we?
Oh, we put them down Foster Mount Road at our convenience station right next to the fence right there, that's what I say, if we take these on, we gonna feel half that parking lot of, you know, when you first go up, well, when Mr. Baker set it to the right right there when we put them, we probably got that many ourselves setting there.
So at this point, it's just my opinion, I'm a supervisor, at this point, uh, us mound is an open area and it's not gonna affect nobody. Uh, we trying to help these people out and make sure that all this stuff out there is moved.
And that's right, I watch for the board.
Don't nobody live on Foster Mount Road, so it's not really gonna affect nobody that live out on Foster Mount Road. I'm not saying go pick them all up at one time, but we can go get some and then go back and get some more and then we get them all.
What day was that, third, last Wednesday, Thursday I was there, Mr. Richie? I said, if you'll put about a half load out, we'll go ahead and pick those up, get those moved, you know, hoping these people will come pick our tires up and we can offset it and it doesn't look like, you know. But I, I just brought it for the board, like I said, y'all asked me to go by there, I've been by there to speak with him twice, uh, you know.
Well, my, Mr. President, my opinion is this, uh, we got money for to pick up the tires. And it ain't all, all because whoever's supposed to come pick them up from us, they not picking them up. They might show up tomorrow and pick them all up, but we ain't got them all out there. The key thing is to get them all out there, if they come to pick them up, at least they'll be out there for them to get.
So I agree with you a hundred percent, but the way I look at this, some people gotta take own responsibility for own things they do. But when you drag six, eight hundred tires to your property and then you want somebody else to take the responsibility and move them, and I understand it affects the whole neighborhood, I'm not saying that. You know, we'll get them, but, but somewhere, somebody gotta be able to count it.
Mr. President, I'm gonna be quiet on this, cause this is not my area. But before I became a county supervisor, that's all he did, like that man he say, took everything to the county, put them all over the place, just like he say. Now all of a sudden, we want everybody in the county to be accountable for what they doing, I agree they need to be accountable, but they need, somebody need to send them a notice and let them know, say, from this day on, this is not gonna be tolerated in the county. You just can't wake up my mom and just say, we gonna do it like this. When they've been carrying everything in the county for fifty years. That's why people moved to the county, cause there wasn't no rules and regulations out there, that's what they told me.
That's true.
So now, uh, I, I'm, I'm not taking up for this young man, but he been collecting tires for years and years and years. So if we got rules out there, how, how, how did he get to the point where he got all them tires sitting out there and nobody say nothing?
And nobody says nothing to the next complaint, so I ain't going over them, or who we dealing with the next.
When was your first time I seen all them tires?
You know, I don't live there, I ain't saying this, but if it was my neighbor, I'd be complaining.
President, I want to, because I think there is something about that and tires. You may need to get Brandon them to go back and do the minutes. I think there is something about collecting tires, it is something in there, yeah.
And they would not accept it, it's a few, we don't collect from business or anything, cause all these businesses would be bringing them out.
Commercial.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do it.
Have Brandon check that, because there is something that you put in place about tires, you cannot, I don't think you can, uh, have it on your pump, they all powered up and stuff like that. Because of the mosquito, because environmental quality, so please go back and check that, there's something there.
Mr. President, I, I agree with everything everybody's saying, I, I, I know about these environmental issues that water and tire will cause, but if you gonna put something in place, you should have notified the people and then they could adjust their self-accompaniment, you can't put something in place and then everybody got still out there and you want them to move it. My thing is.
It's in place, I think it's in place, Brandon don't look, we, we.
It's in place.
Long time, when they go out there, they can't bring like six or eight tires, they buy a piece of property, it's a few tires, they bring a few at a time. They just can't come out there and owe them, and like you said, he gonna use tire business and this and that, I mean, you know, man make a living with it, I'm not trying to help it, but I'm, I'm like you, I'm willing to help it, cause he's got neighbors sitting here that's affected by this and we need to, to address this issue, but.
I ain't saying there ain't a place to get.
There can be no doubt.
You know what I'm saying is this, ever getting to everybody, now I ain't gonna say everybody, a lot of people know exactly what this man do. So my thing is this, if we put something in place to say he can't do it no more, he should have been the first one gotten it out. Did you get a letter, sir? He should have been the first one to get a letter, knowing that he got five hundred tires out there, so we put something in place, then we gonna mail him another. Say, sir, as of so-and-so, so-and-so, you cannot no longer continue to collect tires and you gonna have to remove the tires that you have on your property. Did you get that letter?
Yes.
Mr. President, in case you didn't mind, I know, Mr. Gray, when I came to office, I had, this been a problem from day one. We cared in this courtroom and sent the sheriff out there to notify. So it's not like he just, it was, this been blindsided, I'm not trying to, they just trying to get it cleaned up, I'm not trying to, I would like it for, to help him get his stuff cleaned up, I like the neighbors for to be satisfied. But it's not blindsided, because from day one when I campaigned, it was an issue. And we came in this meeting, and I have sent the sheriff out here several times about it, and I don't know what's in place on the writing side. But I don't have no writing, but it should have been a minute that we have sent that sheriff out here, uh, and I, I go to sheriff right there. It's been, uh, from when I first took off.
I agree with what you saying, supervisor Gaines, what I'm saying is this, you just made it in office, I made it here four years before you.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Them tires been sitting out there forever. So only thing I'm, the final thing to do is for us to assist him in moving the tires, but he sure can't move them by itself.
Yeah, no problem.
So if, if we assist in moving the tires and move the majority of them to Foster Mount to give away for around y'all, that's the ultimate goal, ain't it?
But how did he get them there in the first place, he put them there himself.
Ma'am, I, I agree with what you saying, I was a city officer for sixteen years, West Hills Lane had more tires in West Hills Lane, because back in the day, people told people if you put tires on a, you rolling bank, they gonna save your bank. They got tires all over West Hills Lane, but then eventually, we sent them a notice and they couldn't do that no more, they had to start moving them. That's all I'm saying, he should have been given a notice.
Yes, but you.
Can I make one?
You adjudicate appropriately, menace, so if you do pick them up, you then charge back the, the cost to move.
Uh, can I make one other comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not just talking about tires here, I'm talking about junk and trash and other hazardous materials. I'm, the tires are like the smallest thing on the list. I mean, we're talking about if his place blew up, he would not have all kind of sheets of little bitty pieces of metal flying all over the neighborhood. He's got drums lined all around his area, but there's no tally marks in those drums. He's got a trailer sitting there with someone living in it with no sewage attached to it. I mean, this, the, the, there's.
I, I agree with everything you saying, but I'm just trying to handle one thing at a time. And, and we basically talking about the tire, uh.
I've been working on it every day, me and other people, I hire people to help me.
Yeah. No, no, I haven't.
We're gonna get to it.
Right, right.
Me and Sheriff gonna get together and get to it, we're gonna take care of it, we just be, then we're gonna get together and we're gonna get it through here.
They can do it, but they build it back to the capital.
If the dog will accept my, I'll over, over to the dog.
Yeah. Mr. President, you gotta be recognized to speak at the, at the meeting.
I thought I have other than, like I said, uh, Low Water Bridge and, and JKS Road last week.
What, what do you need to do with it?
We fixed it right now, he fixed it, just Low Water Bridge, IMSA is, he's gonna bring it up and talk and then we'll make a motion to move forward on it.
Yeah, okay.
We want to, we're going to hit Low Water right away. Uh, we met on Thursday, we're planning to come to fix that road. Um, pretty much they wanna do is they want to lower the road by five feet, um, and allow them to remove some of that material, use that material for their pavement, they gonna stabilize the slopes, use a five hundred pound rip route to, uh, secure the slope as well as slow some of the velocity coming off the road. Uh, put some ditches on the opposite side of the road to carry, uh, the runoff to, now that they have, um, in the middle of the project. Uh, that's pretty much the plan, I was discussing with NRCS, the contractor and road department asking to look at it. I feel that it is okay and it will solve the problem, that was the, uh, the extent of what I was asked to do. Um, I've been asked to submit a letter to NRCS stating the same, that I feel that the proposed design that was discussed between O three and TD would work. I will be submitting that letter to NRCS, uh, if you guys decide to move forward with, uh, that emergency project. So Mr. Dollar would like to come and ask you guys that motion and I will submit that letter.
And the price, well, they agreed probably once we get started today, the early price of what it was when it was first submitted and it's gotten a lot worse and a lot longer on the slope, and I'll, uh, we will get that letter submitted once.
Mr. President, uh, am I right, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Mr. Uh, now, no, it was Mr. Doc from school, just kinda, we came up, they already had the design, they designed it and they looked over and they thought it was there and he had to look over, cause he's an engineer, but, um, they already said that it would be an increase that, uh, NRCS after we start, that they gonna have to go back and submit and, uh, they will increase the price on, the NRCS will increase on that, uh, on, on, on after they submit this yard.
Like that lot work a lot longer and things like that, like I said, this is.
Yeah.
From two years we submitted.
Two years.
Yeah.
I don't. Me and supervisor Gray were out there one day and since we've been out there, it's been fifteen foot of the road, then fell off. Uh, probably, so all the pipe that was downside the road, it, it's, it's just about to take the road over and block the river, then so it's something that has to be done.
Correct. I'm making a motion for a board meeting, sir.
So, but.
You heard the question.
I made. I know, I made the motion.
You heard the question, Mr. President.
Yes, okay.
Motion by, what's your motion?
I made the motion that we accept this being a move forward as an emergency project.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
Yeah.
All opposed? I said.
And the issue. Same or whatever.
And, um, on that same EWT, there were three other sites, there were two magnolias, you made no your blu- you made no your blu-sites and one Lincoln Heights site. Uh, they were approved, I got an email on Friday, I believe, that they executed, uh, document to allow that project to move forward. So if you guys would like for us to perform an engineer for that, I just request the board's approval for us to get started, uh, with those three sites in the same EWT. So.
Well, that's it, supervisor Gaines, same by supervisor Gray, any discussion for them?
I didn't hear that yet.
I made the, uh, at least our, uh, engineer on the other three sites, uh, call them out.
Two magnolias.
Two magnolias.
And one Lincoln Heights.
And one Lincoln Heights.
And so I request the same documents to be as hard and everything from NRCS, so we know exactly where those sites located, um, the issue.
All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I said.
Um, I don't have much, the only thing, other thing I have is twenty-sixth of the O T, uh, for the previous board meeting, we were asked to submit reimbursement documents or prepare reimbursement documents for that project. And so we submitted those documents to NRCS, they came back with some adjustments, just the numbers they want us to make, we've made those adjustments. So the only thing I asked now was if you have authorization for, um, I mean, the board president to sign the documents so it can be submitted to NRCS for reimbursement. so it can be submitted to NRCS for reimbursement.
Yeah. Copy of the documents?
Yes.
Mr. President, um, Mr. Ward.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we also, my correct, on the Morgan Town Road, yeah, it was first at the state aid, and I think we had like nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars put aside for state aid. It had to be reprogrammed or something else because we shouldn't use that money. Uh, we need to reprogram that money off Morgan Town Road.
You deprogram it, and then, um, once you deprogram it, they will remove that project from that.
Yeah, we need to deprogram. So do we need to do that? Do I need to make a motion to do that?
Yeah, we can.
You do, but first get that motion.
We need to ask first.
Okay. Okay, well, I just wanna make sure because I, I remember when we had a meeting with the state, uh, and with fellow folks right there, uh, he said that that money was there, so we had to deprogram it because it was essentially wasn't doing state aid. But I feel like nine hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars, and we can deprogram to go back to our state aid fund.
Yeah, I need.
You said, you said that.
I need a motion to reverse. Put a motion.
So.
Motion by Superbowl Gang, second by Superbowl Gang, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say. Now.
Now, uh, I make the motion that we deprogram, um, the exact amount, have the nine hundred plus thousand from state aid, uh, from the Morgan Town Road to reimburse it back to our state aid fund.
Motion by Superbowl Gang, second by Superbowl Gang, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say.
But I, I prepared the documents to state aid, and if any signatures, I'll just.
Got you, alright.
And, um, Liberty Road, we got the comments back. We're gonna submit those back this week to state aid. So we will get that, not Liberty Road, the second strike of the project, we'll get that project submitted back to state aid.
How long do you foresee this project?
Uh, the last time, it shouldn't take no more than a month to get to the final stage, to be ready to advertise. So hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be striking and everything. The project doesn't take about weeks to, once we get to start. So we should have it done by sometime this summer. Um, and then Burke Road, we're still waiting on specific department of aquatic history. So I'm gonna personally try to find someone that's there to try to get that project underway on the release of the document.
You saw it, Barker?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're also waiting on for the right-of-way acquisition, the Fisheries and Wildlife Service. We made the application in, um, it's the I, we, yeah, then we sent it on, I say, we, I sent it on the older form that they gave me. Um, so I had to resend it to a, on a newer form. It was identical form. I don't know why. They, they changed it from, it just has a different year. We sent that off requesting the right-of-way, uh, a lot of questions here and there. George helped me answer, Robbie helped me answer some of those questions. Um, they, she did say it was a long time to process to get that right-of-way. They about six months, she suggested. Um, so we reached out to our lobbyists to see if they the only one up there that might be able to, like, maybe their congressional staff can start putting them in there. Our guess is it goes to some, uh, federal route in Atlanta, goes through some trouble. It, it goes to the same, uh, if anyone else asking for a right-of-way from a government, private, or public, they have to go through this acquisition process. So Burke Road, rich.
So, Mr. President, so we need some help from who?
Congressional delegation is what mainly advises us. That's what we're good. I sent it to the Rocky General to reach out to and get pressure.
Because Congress and Thompson getting help, uh, they.
I'm sorry.
I, 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 I wasn't digging. But well, there, uh, I didn't meet him Saturday, was it Saturday?
Saturday.
Uh, Senator Robert Johnson, I mean, uh, let's just say Robert Johnson was here, and, uh, the congressman was here. And then I, I didn't, I didn't know. But we do have some contact, so, uh, we need to reach out there, but so we can all get it done.
Burke Road is long, well, they probably do need to reach out there, but it sounds like you, you're in part of that history, and so sometimes they may need a little, you know, gentle massage. And you sometimes. And then from the federal side, we need somebody from the federal, our delegation. You know, from the federal side, anytime we're asked, they will usually start poking around, kind of what's going on. Doesn't mean it necessarily speed things up. We usually get reaction from.
Hopefully we can get some help with this moving forward, because here we are, maybe about ready for our bid, right? And I have, I have a design.
Yeah.
Probably. And now they tell us it's gonna take six months to get another one. Better building, that's just ridiculous. We've been battling this night before. I mean, this was an issue before I came home. I built with it constantly, every storm.
It's to fund a federally appropriated grant to do it. So it's like, you know, Fed funding.
Like that. So actually, that's their problem.
They, even Wildlife and Fisheries is the one that, they made us a request, a letter of recommendation to join in the flat grant to begin with. So it's like, yeah. Uh, that was part of the application. I included that in there, you know. This is the reason why Wildlife Y'all want this program to be here. We just need an expansion of the existing right-of-way. We should understand why it gives us quick take abilities, um, for that very reason. If you're, if you're already adding on to a road, especially on a bridge.
We need to keep that forward tight because we might have the same issues when we move forward with York.
Right. I really mean if we can get that, we go for the federal land on York, go ahead and do that process, go as soon as possible. I, I, I don't know how long it takes to do what you do, so.
Well, we'll, we'll expedite certain things on your part. Though funded and I had to make sure, but we'll probably expedite some things to try to.
Get it to help.
Yeah.
Uh, any questions for me while I'm here?
Yes.
If not at all, but I appreciate you all's time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have some big terms, so.
I have some terms. Hey.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Lord.
Good morning.
First of all, after meeting a couple weeks ago, Rock and I wrote all the E W P projects, verify all the wanted for the pay up that I submitted for that year for Route Two and Route Threes. I just wanted to verify that.
Any, they approve, it was on the document, this time they approved.
Okay. Secondly, I need a supplemental agreement approved for State Park Road. And it states, whereas plans, concrete driveway and the concrete curving section on the project, and the code did not have a payout in the concrete driveways, and whereas the contractor had numerous employees on the front, they tested positive for COVID multiple times, they continued working, but not as efficient with one or more employees out, and others working a few days, waited a few days to be tested. Whereas material providers, concrete pipe, reinforcements, steel, erosion mat forms, and freight have been backlogged due to COVID, and it takes longer than they expected to send materials. Materials were ready to be sent, contracted to go get them, due to provider not being able to get trucks and drivers due to COVID. Now, therefore, it is hereby agreed that the following items at unit price will be added to the contract to accomplish the work in forty-three days, three additional days for work, forty for COVID-related. Add to the contract, extend the contract time to two hundred and sixty-eight days. And then the item added is concrete driveway at a hundred dollars a square yard. That's, that's the extended public or the supplemental agreement, and I'm under the impression that Frank's already discussed it with, I'm gonna say new one.
No.
I just got this, I just got this from Jim's form, so I apologize for my. Uh, extended forty-three work days from what date? Whatever the date of the contract is, and that towards, it just being additional forty-three days.
Written in the hour two point five.
Is this what we discussed last meeting?
Yeah, sir.
I remember.
It's all.
Yeah, we, 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 I was going with the extension. Yeah, we need to do about the extension because we was questioning on the day. What was the day? Twenty-five was up there, wasn't it?
Should be a two C D X. Uh, you said two eighty?
Two sixty.
Yeah, two sixty.
It was two twenty-five.
So when did that expire?
Forty-three. And then also, wait, I think it was September.
Yeah.
Are you stated any adjustments? Is that on the bids? September. From the unit pricing of the bids?
Pardon? The extra cost.
The extra cost.
Yeah, that, so there were, it was, the concrete driveways were shown in the plan, but there just wasn't a payout.
How did you determine? I got asked, it's not private.
Yeah.
And you have, how did you determine whether that's a commercially reasonable price?
We just paid state aid comparison.
So you used the state aid comparison?
Yeah, they, they put out, and well, I'm not saying it's two months, but it's supposed to be here six months. They take all the state aid prices for every unit just across the state, and they average them out, and they put out a schedule. And so when we take whatever proposal is, we look at it and justify it and see if it's justified. And if it's fair.
Did you scan that email that Randy gave me?
Yep.
You have to show that. It's on, it's on your bid item. You have to show that the amount is commercially reasonable.
Right.
You have to. How much is the estimated cost?
Uh.
You're pretty don't like.
I sent you in the file. I can't print something without.
You're in the line, we're in the line.
Yeah.
Can I pull your line?
Can I postpone that till we get an answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Put this out.
It looks like when the end of the contract is, and you add, add the date to when does it begin?
Here they start. I think it's two seventy, wouldn't it? Hey.
It was two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five.
It was two forty-five.
Close to forty-three, two sixty-eight.
And then they added four day length.
There's a, there's a finish date on that. Do they close the finishing?
Yes, we asked for, we asked for it. That's what I asked for last week, trying to find out and anticipate it.
They start curves.
They were supposed to start better than last Thursday.
Hey, I think they're supposed to draw curves better. They last Thursday or this week. So people getting compacting the last week, I think. Proof roll, when they hate.
Yes, that was the.
Why didn't they start the curves and gutters?
They didn't have a compact right. Didn't get started compact.
So.
They can't.
What does that mean?
That means the road, before you, uh, put the service down, it was, uh, still, uh, but anyway, the fashion had to be, uh, made before you. Yeah, soft side, basically. So you wanna be the asphalt and get the asphalt. Actually, we drove on.
I don't know.
Me and you went up.
I'm geared to that. Do we have any idea when we're gonna finish this project now?
I have no idea. I got.
It's about to be December, all of a sudden, magically.
Well, he'll be back in a minute. What's the other?
Go ahead. Yeah, I, I just gotta have a new hire. I already submitted paperwork, uh, to personnel, uh, team resource. Um, but I have a letter here that I'm gonna add to that and make sure that they understand that they require time and no benefits transitioned.
Is this the two?
At twelve dollars an hour.
Did you wind up here then?
No, no, it was charged in the bank.
Okay. Uh, new hire, this is gonna be hour and a rate, twelve dollars, annual rate twenty-four nine six. You heard the question, Shrosh.
So.
Motion by Superbowl Gang, motion second by Superbowl Gang, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I say.
Alright, good, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anyone else? Sheriff, do you wanna go?
Yeah. Morning, boy. How y'all doing this morning? Got a couple things this morning. Nothing bad. First thing I want you to do is thank you all for the cameras y'all ordered from jail. They are being called now as we speak, and I am extremely happy about this, because that's gonna help us out a lot. Other thing is, and once you all know that the trucks that you all allowed us to get through Enterprise, they have been delivering, and they get striped out as we speak. With that being said, there are no new state contracting is out already. And the problems that we've had in the past, when I say here, I mean the country, with vehicles, it's just got worse for police officers and law enforcement as a whole. And that's because Ford and Chevrolet say they not making police vehicles this year. No pursuit vehicle, pursuit rated vehicles this year, Ford shoot. So Dodge had all the state contracting keeped. Now, if there were to look at, that's what it is. The Rango's, Chargers, trucks. I say it all that to say that, I know that a lot of stuff's going on with budget, and y'all get that in order. But we really need to try to get vehicles lined up kind of next year before those are even on the way. I just wanna put that out there, because with them limited, and for them, with us losing G M A and Ford, that's, I mean, everybody in the country gonna be fighting for whatever Dodge makes, and that's gonna be a problem. And state contracting, state D M is open now. Didn't like that news, didn't wanna hear it, but, you know, I'm delivering it to everybody. Also, I want you all to know that the, uh, National Institute of Corrections, um, is coming down. They travel there, it's the eighteenth, but they're gonna be here, they're gonna be here from the eighteenth all the way through the twenty-first. And on the twenty-first, there is gonna, they wanna hold up community meeting, community town hall and rest too, wherever they gonna find with the jail situation. I had to kind of turn the call and talk to the lady who's heading the team book to show that they're not coming to try to get anybody to parole anything like that. They're strictly coming to assist and scout out and like.
Yes, they're not, I talked to her, it was maybe twenty percent of it is actually about the jail itself.
Right.
The additions of the jail. A lot of it is looking at underlying factors that lead to overcrowding, the excitement stays of the jail. Uh, and that's, so those are the things they'd like to tackle. Why are certain people in jail on pre-trial so long? Certain people are being held under misdemeanors for particularly a long period of time, things like that. They wanna look at strategies. If, they're not in any way saying you have to do this, that, or the other. They're saying if you want this as your community, this is how you do it, if this is how you, this, you know, just was real impressed with her, and hopefully she helps, uh, discuss various ideas that we have about that jail. And that's, well, that was the main thing, is she's not gonna tell you what to do. She's going over different scenarios that y'all, that y'all have about the jail and, you know, options there. Another thing that she's talking about too is, uh, whether there's any, you know, money trees lying around, so to speak, which unfortunately, there are not many money trees, but there are some strategies that, that you can help, uh, uh, tackle those costs. So.
Yeah. And I want a Scott to, to talk, so even related to the board, how it needs to be related. But what I am asking the board for is this, on October the first, from nine A M to ten A M, or not.
October.
I'm, I'm sorry, no, October nineteenth.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, October nineteenth. What I'm asking the board for, and I'm asking Ms. King to be present too. I just wanna hour you all time so y'all can meet these folks in here in my, they're asking for an hourly time on that day. It doesn't have to be all of you all if you don't want. I would love it if it was all of you all, so y'all are directed here. But they're asking to meet so they can lay it out, what they, what they do while they're here, and what they're planning on doing while they're here, and really get a feel for you all too as well. So October the nineteenth, I'm asking some of you all to meet at that now, King.
Where?
October nineteenth downstairs in E O C.
What time?
Nine o'clock, nine to ten A M. And, and they specifically asked you two, Ms. King, the county administrator. They wanted the county administrator on this too as well, so. If I can get a couple of you all, or however y'all wanna do that, because I know with the form and things, how that works.
You might wanna get, I know you're an I C L West, Warren, is that something you might be able to make as, as B P? One of y'all.
Just for one I.
From her. From her viewpoint, she's not pushing, in jail, old jail, whatever, I think.
No, you haven't met these folks, nobody has met, they've never been here before.
I do it.
Thank you, I appreciate it, they just wanna hour you time, that's all. Um, and.
You know what time that you wanna do?
Yeah, nine o'clock, nine to ten A M, that's what they have on their schedule here from nine to ten. They asking for two supervisors and, and then they gonna have some other people there, too, like myself and some other people, but, um. Now, the community meeting though, in reference to this, gonna be at the safe room, and that's gonna be from eight o'clock that morning to eleven thirty that evening, uh, that morning, eleven thirty.
Meeting at nine though is downstairs?
Yeah, meeting at nine is downstairs, but the meeting on the twenty-first is gonna be, the meeting on October the twenty-first is gonna be from eight to eleven thirty, and it's for anybody who wants to show up.
And they're conducting that?
And they're conducting that meeting, I. But I would love for some of my supervisors to be there at that meeting as well. That'll work me, what, and the thing I want you all to understand is, the first thing they tell sheriffs and anybody who requests technical assistance from them is that we are not in the business of telling people, uh, that they need to feel, we are the business of telling people how to fix the one they have. And if they don't, if they can't, then definitely take other options. So I'm just exploring options on, on what we can do and how can we deal with this situation that we're gonna have to deal with. And this assessment didn't cost from accounting, that they're doing this for free, it's about a sixty thousand dollar assessment that, that they're doing for free for us because of the organizations that I'm a part of. So, I appreciate you all supporting this. The last thing I have, uh, I just wanna let it make it forward where it is, 'cause I know money is a hot topic all the time. And, you know, last month, I lost my pay note also to the international paper, lost another debit to the Amazon. And eyes of October twenty-eighth, I'm losing one of my most critical people, which is one of my investigators slash evidence. So, the reason why I'm saying is, October twenty-eighth is gonna be her last day. And this board meeting is fun as now, I just found it out Friday. And so I'm gonna need to do a call meeting or something to get somebody hired to put in that place, if you're talking about every piece of evidence, that's all. You know, for the entire sheriff's office, even when I said, you say that you're talking, you're talking over probably fifteen thousand items. That's a lot to learn in a short amount of time. So I'm just saying, President, President, keep that in mind, 'cause I will be calling, asking you all to do at least a call meeting, so I can get somebody to put in that place. That person is going to the A T's office, just so you all know. She's going to the A T's office, out of six hundred people, they selected her. She's gonna be over this whole half of the state when it comes to public integrity, the public, the integrity of the business, which is, you know, on one side is an honor. You know, because she got her roots here, on the other side is saying, if you're losing somebody that's extremely with a trend. So when you're talking about money, and I appreciate you all doing that. If we can get our people to add above the medium, medium income for our area, I think we would lose the value of employees that all of us lose everything. So I don't want, appreciate it. Yes.
Jeff, I'm gonna ask you a question. Know it.
Oh, if I didn't know?
How they start this up?
They have started, and I actually just text them to call so I can get you an update on where they working at.
Yeah, yeah, I just need to make sure they work.
They are working, yes.
All over, I think, you know, I think we don't, you know, we had, uh, earlier on, we gonna go from the north end of the county, I think, obviously, south forces. The rain, brown, more and more, we kind of, there's different places that we had, and all the, just scroll locations that, at no discretion.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanted to make sure they're working, that's all I needed to know.
They are working, and that thing that I brought up earlier that me and Scott had talked about with the city, those are the cameras that you can get also as well that really wouldn't cost you nothing. They already paid for and ready, but it needs to be discussed. The boards need the supervising and the city, and everybody needs to get involved in it, because you got Ford, you got, you got the Ford and Parrish involved, the A P D, us, city masses. But we need, we need to get it from our board to push that issue.
But I mean, I, I, yeah, I have no idea what you're talking about. And if, you know, if we go sit at the table, we need somebody to take the lead, because that's before my time, I don't have, I don't mind coming to the table, but I don't have no idea of what they did.
I know, and I'll get you the documents though, I'll get, I'm gonna give you all of your documents, so that y'all can read it and have time and look over before meeting set up. And then, when you get brought up, speak up, but it's, it's just in there.
Yeah, sure, I'll be there.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
I'll go.
I, I'll be there. Anybody got anything else? It's all I have.
So Scott answered your question, it's approximately twenty thousand dollars added to the project, and for whoever was asking about the time and time, fourteen days.
We already proved that, I'm pretty sure.
I don't know, I'm not sure we did.
Well, this might be.
The twenty thousand dollars in concrete, I'm pretty sure we already proved it. Extentions of driveways.
Okay.
Yeah.
Roughly, I don't know, time flies.
Six weeks ago, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, I think we hit it, that's all it is.
Twenty thousand dollars.
But I guess some, maybe some agreement's never been signed. Y'all may agree on it, with the sub no agreement, also you didn't ask for the forty-three extra working days, so it's not calendar days, so it's not a definite end date.
There is no end date.
It's a, it's a, working days and calendar days work different. I mean, working days are days that can actually work, so if it's raining, or bad weather, or whatever, that's not considered working day. So forty-three good weather days.
So it's, aren't we already into those days, though?
So his time, his time, he had one working day left at the end of September. So he's already into it. They're not working on weekends, I suspect, though.
I don't know.
That ample opportunity to allow work. But I mean, most of what they're asking for, so, is, I mean, everybody's aware of all the delays and it doesn't matter what you're dealing with now.
So Robbie, what?
I, I'm asking a question, so you saying the forty-three extra days comes after the one day in October?
September.
I mean, September.
So it's gonna be fifteen days, or nine, sixteen days?
The way the brand was talking, when we were here last time, time had expired.
Yes, it had expired.
As he asked on back before that, and I thought I had in my notes, but I didn't have it in my notes, but anyhow. Alright, did you know those?
Jim, we've been keeping up with it, I just talked to him, he said that he had one working day left at the end of September.
They had them. Have y'all got some patches worked yet? I know they hadn't had some patching.
I'll have to ask you.
Well, they put all bad driving.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, they hadn't had them, they didn't have the patching, that's why I was.
I know they, I know they took a lot and took it off, put it back in.
Yeah, but you didn't have the patching, you know.
I'm not sure, can you just, make me a call by?
I think if they come to warn what they were doing, they could get it with the rubber and they go wetting down, wetting, trying to do it, and mixing material, pulling material, like Paige was saying. They end up letting junk trucks and trying to proof road it, to try to keep the patching, and I think it was worth the last hour, perhaps last third, version. Wednesday, the last Wednesday I was last here.
Alright, good.
Randy cannot find anything, Randy cannot find anything in the minutes, but I know we discussed, I know Brand discussed twenty thousand dollars. And I know we discussed it.
We did, when Jim talked this morning, he thought Brandon already discussed it with y'all.
He did discuss it, but nine minutes, nothing was ever approved.
There's no further approval.
We did discuss it, we did.
I guess 'cause there was nothing in the contract, 'cause we never got a date. Or a final.
Yeah, of course.
All of them spoke that day, starts down.
Yeah, we don't have a date, uh, beginning and ending date.
Yeah.
So.
With the working days, you don't have any of that. Not with working days. Working days are counted by days, 'cause you don't know if it's gonna rain the next week or not, that's a different thing, when a working day and calendar day. Most Saturday projects are done by working days.
But there's been a lot of working days when there's nothing working.
He gets, he gets, he gets counted for those too.
Yeah, then he gets in December, and he don't have any working days, magically.
Yes, those working days, if he's not working on a, a good day, then he gets counted as a day.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, so, but, uh, so what we do, we need to prove that. Well, you definitely gotta do the curve and go, he got it, I mean, he got it.
So, yeah, so basically, even if, even if y'all approve forty-three days, it's done, it's done, it's done, anyway, then you'll be in the little day, day and set that anyway.
Yeah.
I see on September second, we, there was a motion to extend the state park by forty days. On September second, six, six.
Yeah, you still need to approve.
There's a sub no contract on the minutes anyway.
Yeah. So did his hand on the concrete?
Did not, just extended the deadline. And maybe that, that we didn't have the agreement, but I'll maybe just help with the maintenance we got, and so.
Yeah.
But we have it now. I've got the signed agreement.
Yeah.
And Jim, Jim already had this approved, was state aid as well.
Yeah.
He said he's gonna send me the proof, right?
Yeah.
Are we gonna make a motion?
Yeah. Yeah, we need to move.
Oh, yeah, you can make a motion to approve the sub no agreement.
Uh, well, I don't make a motion to approve the sub no agreement. Is it anything pending?
Okay. And then you just got some that, okay, okay.
I made a motion that we, um, that approved it as a sub no agreement.
Motion by supervisor Gaines.
Right.
Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Thank you.
If there's any more extensions, if the contractor can be here too, we can get a little more.
Are there any here for me? Appreciate it.
Any more department reports?
My, my business was saying with that kind of conversation.
Go ahead.
I apologize if I asked, um, I'm in my office by myself today, so that's why I don't. Um, I need to get an approval for like the place announcing the national press, or our, our, that, our head official is doing it here. Um, you have to give a county representative, uh, a thirty day notice that they are, uh, acting of the opposite, so we need to place an announcement in the newspaper. Um, I know the last time you did that right now, it's that they went to the city as well as to the counties, so I'm gonna try to give them a process time to place it in the newspaper as well. I need to get an approval for that.
You heard the request? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? Lashay, can you?
And send the notices out?
You're, you're not gonna send out notices, you're just gonna run it in the paper, correct, Lashay?
Yeah, we, I wanna do a different approach this year, and that way, uh, the ones that don't get, uh, the melons, I mean, if. I was, the reason I said, uh, Ricky got one last year, he sent, uh, uh, his mom or somebody got one, and they're in the city man. So the newspaper, uh, the melons became mail, went into city man, and he kinda played it like a pranky. Because the, the post office didn't know how to separate the rain from the county and the city. So, uh, it, uh, kind of threw the residents out, the city residents as well, the, the county, I just want to place it in the national press, um, as an announcement, so that they don't get upset by it.
Yeah, this is.
It's a different approach.
This isn't the official notice of the debt that's required by statute for the debt, I'll say, is it?
No, I can be, I want to place in the newspaper this, uh, this week, but I do also need y'all to give me an approval for the down rain melon, so I can send them out.
That, that, okay, I understand now, it kinda just to, uh, try to get everyone's attention, you know, rain does similar things for catch reductions too, it's pretty effective.
All in favor? All opposed? I said. Is that all you have?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lashay.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, public comments? Any public comments?
You need to stand at the podium, and then get your name and address.
Good morning, I'm Bonnie Pace, one twelve Radcliffe, or twenty day Radcliffe Road. And I heard y'all talking about that, the property in question earlier, but I never heard a decision that y'all made on whether, uh, Mr. Delator was gonna be given more time to clean up his lot, or if he's gonna have to build a fence, like, like y'all mentioned last time. Or someone was gonna come in and clean it. It's true, he has been working on it, there are some vehicles that have been removed, there are numerous tires that have been moved, but, moved, but the pictures that I sent here before are basically still the same. There's not been any, you know, demonstrative activity done on it. And I'm just asking, I'd just like to know what, what the board intends to do, um, in that situation.
Black folks with the sheriff, I'm sorry, I spoke with the sheriff a while ago, and he asked someone in mind if Mike wanna come get all the tires off the property, whatever. Um, yeah, my, they come and say, and try to help out.
Yeah, the only question they had was if somebody paying to have them removed or not, and I didn't know if that's something the county can afford, so what? They said if they paying for the removal, just start on the date. So, not sure how it works.
We can't lay down.
He said he hired somebody deep?
He hired someone.
You got somebody hired?
No, I got some people helping, bringing them down.
He has, he has made an improvement, but it's not a marked improvement. I mean, he has at least twenty cars out there that are, have not moved for years and years and years.
And I spoke with him about the vehicles, not the y'all, but I did speak with him about the vehicles since, uh, last Wednesday when I was there, I think he done bought a black truck out and brought them into the road. That's me, but anyhow, uh, he said he gonna clear out a area in the back behind his home and move those vehicles down below there. Uh, once he gets the time, I don't know what the time is on that, but that's what he told me, I don't do them with those. Uh, the tire, I mean, the board wants to continue, you know, we moved him, moving them out front, we picked them up with that, and then he said he's got a trucker that he could help move too, to the convenience station, you know, we're continuing movement, and I called EDQ again today and find out what's going on with the tire grant, and when these people gonna pick up, you know, but if they don't, then we stuck with that hazard there. You know, but winter's coming on, so mosquitoes is not breeding, things like that, you know, rhinos for that, so, well, I hope we can make, gotta, you know, move for summer now.
Robbie, I should, that's on our, our driveway.
A little bit, somewhere on our driveway, he's got a few vehicles that he's working on, and he said he's working on, he was gonna move those, uh, all of the driveway, 'cause I told him, you know, where our driveway was in that area. And like I said, he was moving a few tires, I think there's a few out there now, come by Thursday afternoon, there's a few tires there on the right side of the property that he had moved out. Uh, that was moved there come by Thursday, I think it was, going to the Thursday afternoon, I just stopped, I just to look.
I, I just don't think that, uh, I'm gonna get it when I can, is gonna work for this layer of people that live out there. So, I can't recognize you, though.
Ms. Pace, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, I just wanted you to be aware that although he has made very small improvements, he has made some improvements, and, um, everybody's focusing on the tires. That's not, that's not the only problem out there, and I just want you to realize that. And I appreciate y'all taking the time to let me board with my opinion.
Yeah, yes, I have.
But, uh, Miss Pace, what, uh, what we gonna do is allow him to, I told him to all continue was cleaning up all of, and, uh, we had a row manager. And, uh, we had our own manager, uh, checking myself on continuous progress, and just the progress stop. Then next, I won't be sad to get your neighbors cleaned up, and I won't be sad of him to get my opportunities to continue working to clean it up, but it'll be something that will be continued in months, months close by all of us. So something happens, we'll make it right the way of it.
And, and Mr. President, the focus on the tires is not, because that was the emphasis as far as the public minister side of it. Focus on the tires is very specific, have to dispose of tires. We offer a service as, at our site, four tire disposable. Robbie was concerned that he just dropped off a ton of tires, because that would be overwhelming on the board, was his concern. That's why the factors came up, to see whether that would be an available dump spot or whatever that the case may be, so.
Well, if you don't mind me saying so, every time we get new tires, we have to pay a charge for our tires to be disposed of. So, I mean, we're taxpayers and we're paying to have our tires disposed of. But Mr. Delutter has collected them for years, and now he's got the county helping him haul them off, and it, it, it just doesn't seem right.
And if that's exactly why this board was talking about tires in great detail like that.
Because we realize that too, that we're all paying, every time, I don't know if he went, picked these tires up from some of those places that got paid to dispose those tires. So, and then, if he bought them, or, I don't know what, what the story is, uh, but that's a lot of tires to collect over however long it's been. It's been a ten-year period, or?
Well, I know that he's got one pickup truck sitting right smack, smack beside where his railbo, um, mailbox is. And that particular pickup truck has been sitting there for at least seven to ten years. And I'm, it's not, it's not able to move, I guess, and it's just stuff like that.
It's a mud truck.
That's something to be out of the county property, and, and that place got to be.
All right, well, are you, Ms. Pace, you done?
I'm sorry?
Ready to go?
Yes.
If you wanna speak, yes, man, if you wanna speak, you can just stand up. I ain't even have ready.
Yes, uh, I am John Thor, Ken Radcliffe Road, uh, problem, complaint. There is, uh, the trucks are picking it all up, bagging it, putting it out by the road for the trashmen to pick up. I put the dogs out by the road for, uh, county to pick it up. Uh, I'm working on all this stuff at the same time. I meant place has, having pretty bad off, but I can't do it overnight. I mean, I gotta have time to do it. I appreciate your time for that. Uh, the only vehicles, I got seventy-three Barracuda. That's my pride and joy. I don't put it on the road, I don't drive it, I just look at it. That's what I choose to do. That mud truck, I got twenty thousand dollars in it. I don't, I don't drive it on the road. I mean, where am I supposed to put it at? On my property, right? Uh, I do have them too close to the road. I don't know exactly what the restrictions are from the center of the road back, or side of the road back, or whatever.
Mr. Dog, what is that, twenty-five feet in diameter?
Forty foot.
Probably a forty-foot right away, so it'd be twenty outside and I'd be twenty.
Twenty, but I just estimate by the light, I don't know, I'm not even sure. Uh, but if you give me some time, I'll get it cleaned up, I'll get it straightened. Uh, just continued to see progress on it. I've got more than just myself working on it.
And, Mr. Dog, I know, I appreciate you trying to clean it up, but if in the meantime, will you please not add to and bring no more tires, because the county is doing, I understand you say it's your business, but you know, that's, uh, all Supervisors, I understand your business, but sometimes things may clean up, or we don't know, and I'm not going to the higher times to get, 'cause I've heard you say it's your business. But I would ask if you could not continue to bring things, because we are actually trying to clean this problem up. We not trying to continue to do this down the line, but, uh, and not gonna do that. And I appreciate it, and even with your trucks, uh, I would say we can come up to some kind of agreement. You do have that, uh, thing, and I know y'all are sort of opposite, or maybe doing offense, but try to get it cleaned up off the county right away, and if you think that you're not gonna get it cleaned up in time in a, uh, you know, a, a, a matter of time, think about that other option too, or that finish like this, if we are trying to help you to get straight, but we also trying to please these neighbors, and you know, it's the first time you hear, but I can promise you, not just them, since the day I've been off, I've had phone calls about this part.
Uh, I've been worried about metal building, is there any restrictions on that? Only putting up a metal building?
No.
No.
There are no restrictions on that, and it just shows us whether it's a public minister or not. So, if you have everything in an orderly metal building, that's perfectly fine. And I also. Do you have any idea what the timeframe is to getting cleaned up?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm working on it every day.
So, what, how much time do you think you need?
Uh, I'm not sure. There is according to weather, and people showing up, helping me. I don't know, ninety days or so.
Okay, so it's ninety days, and within thirty days, it should be a third of the way cleaned up?
Yeah.
If the county assists you in certain ways, they have to build back to the tax law. So if they end up with those tires, that's what's gonna end up happening to you. The cost cleanup, we assess to your tax law. Okay? You're supposed to be collecting, she said two dollar, if you're a tax law business, you collect a two dollar fee when you replace tires, so that you can, what, paper disposal of the tires? As EDQ does require that now.
They put me in, uh, you know, like washouts and stuff in the back?
Yeah, that's not proper disposal, that's why you collect the two dollar, put it properly disposed of.
Missed it, the call number and I don't know, all of it, but you not pay.
You can't pay them.
No.
You have to dispose of them properly, that's, and that's why the county has that little bin there, but that's for residential, not for commercial type of things. Like Goodyear and all them, they collect that money, and they have to dispose, pay to dispose, like, collect it at two dollars a piece.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, I, uh, I forgot to ask you one minute there. I did have a resident called on State Park, and I think something happened before I got here, but, um, the previous supervisor, are you familiar with those, uh, trying to get Adams County water up to those houses there? Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, about the Logan's up in there?
Yeah, up through there. Well.
They're tied right from sixty-one up there.
Well, I guess tied to Adams County, 'cause you know, we came up, they said Adams County, the previous supervisor had told them about they had to buy some pipe or something like that, they didn't want to do it, and I told them, I, I, I had no knowledge, but I told them, I would bring it up at the meeting, uh, to see if you had any knowledge of, uh, basically what they wanna do, is find out what it'll take. So if you were, so, what is that, Ken here?
Uh, he here.
If, if you.
Herman, see what's going on.
Herman, uh, uh, Ken, asking what it'll take, uh, and then we'll get some kind of asset out of the problem after we give it to them. I just forgot to bring it up on the board.
Okay.
That's all I have. I use.
All right, if you'll come to the table, supervisor grab.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh. I think it's time that, uh, we go set up a meeting, a hearing for this ARP money, and, uh, do agree with Supervisors Wilson that we need to check for all of the money, pay out some debt, and I do agree with everybody else that we need to do some meaningful stuff in this community that, uh, helps some people that's gonna last a long time. My next question, uh, I'm not gonna wait on the, I tried to get back in here, but like I said earlier, Congressman Benny Thompson, uh, was here Saturday at the state, and had a very good meeting. Him, uh, explaining his role, and, and what he's gonna try to do to get the people to have a chance to, this, uh, company there. Uh, my second goes out to the Gibson, Martin, Demby, Scarborough, and Ray family, and I'm glad to see how IT, uh, director Brandon is, uh, that they've worked, and pray that you take it easy. See, like, the meeting show came back, I failed, but I hope you take it easy, and I don't know how nobody else feel, but I think it's kind of quiet in this community with, with, with the crime that we have borne on it, over the last couple of months, uh, something gotta be done, I mean, we get one thing fixed, then crime start popping back up, so, uh, it's gonna be really important for us to get cameras. I'm prepared to add them over to the whole county entity. Uh, Scott, wh- what is the next step with Morgan Town Road?
Next step is getting a, uh, M-DOT number, project number, and we've sent the information over, we've sent that information over to our lobbyists, or we've sent that information over to our state delegate as well, um, to try to push that through the bureaucracy of, of M-DOT as, as much as possible. Uh, we talked with Randy, but then we also include his higher up, Lee, as you know, Lee is really positive to deal with, it seems like he's put an emphasis on this project. That's our next step, is get that project number. To get that project number, you know, beyond the next step after that.
I mean.
Um, getting training for Angie and Robbie, they're, they're doing that, um, they're, they already had it, but they're renewing it so that it stays current, um, so.
So when I'm in church and when I'm in grocery store, people keep asking me about Morgan Town Road, oh, what, what, what should I say?
We've got one in place, we're pushing it for a date to get started on it, you know, I can't get a date that's, they won't give me a date, so I can't get a date. Um, but I'm pushing as much as possible to get it, the money needs to stay there, it's going to happen. We just, we're just approving how that's gonna be, how phase one's gonna be high, and so it's just approved on the, on the minutes.
So how hard is it for us to get this number you talking about from Morgan Town Road?
I couldn't tell you the inner workings of M-DOT. I wouldn't think, it's already been sent approved and all that, it took all that long. What do you think?
Do we need to contact that guy, Commissioner? Could he help?
Certainly can, we blew them too, and then, in the loop, we've sent them correspondence, have been sent them, top correspondence, that's what, we'll do that today too.
And when you send it to the high commissioner, the senior commissioner will live in town too?
He already responded back on that.
What's that?
I think he did send some to Congressman, but I think he sent all the smocks back.
Yeah, case of saying he talked to your other commissioner.
Okay, could you say any more?
We'll just, just to keep them, you know, been hurt, see, everyone's here. There, there's Bible verses about the widow, the unfair judge, the widow kept on and kept on, and finally the unfair judge gave her what she asked for, so that's good.
Where, where are we with Southview? Cause I know they got a serious problem, I hear a serious problem with Southview.
Yes, the state has adjusted their pricing, so I'll get on the phone, on call with, back on them now, they got the pricing that we need. We should allow us to obtain it and get it to, to the county.
Okay, my next question here is, uh, it may, may be a little wacky, we, we are seeing, we had a couple of, there's always a head of concern about the water deal, uh, doing, I don't know, jumping.
Yes. Yes, we're sending a request for, to meet with our Public Service Commissioner, find out what's going on with that, and send that out, or, you know, I'll follow up on that, make sure they.
Have they responded?
Haven't responded, but, but I'll follow up with, get a response for it. And that's a serious thing we need to make sure people have. That's in Cessy's water, obviously, because of that savings, um, that's, that's a lot of money. It wasn't double old cruise, you're talking a hundred dollars, so it's not a double old cruise. See, that's not seen many. Especially when you can, when you're right next to the city's water, which is, is pretty reasonable.
I think their own city's water, but.
Their own city sewer.
I think their own city water too, they just get jarred twice.
Yeah, it's just, well, I know they're on city sewer, I don't know if they're on city water, makes no sense.
Did you find out who on the water service?
Yes, I got it written.
Yeah.
Move it?
Red River, out of Missouri.
Out of Missouri.
Red River.
Yes.
Uh, buying water from the city and sending it to the people in the area?
I, no.
You know, they have all four.
It's all from you.
They got two sewer deals, you're correct there, the city getting one, and this guy, who they are getting one.
Well, I know about the sewer, but now you talking about the water, I thought they be selling the water too.
I can, I could say yes, when I was there last week, remember I called you about the hole down with Royal Brooklyn and Mackinac, because it's undermined the street coming from there. I called the guy that day on Monday, he was gonna be there, means he was repaired, and I told him he had to fix the road and all. Massive waterwork pulled up when I was sitting there, so I don't know, but they did pull up, 'cause I spoke to the lead, and told the guy was coming.
We'll find out, if that's the case.
Could you tell me that?
Yeah.
I think it's a, 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 in between, uh, a middle man and all this, that's the reason over there, uh, people live out in area water, really warm up so hot, 'cause they you got a middle person.
Yeah, it's cert, certified areas, only that group, Hubert, can sell water in that cert, certified area. They have to buy it. You know, it just shows you not, where's your government created, you know?
Yeah, uh.
Because they could compete with the city water, you know, which is.
First thing I wanna ask, Lonnie, how we coming on the Liberty Road EWP project?
Liberty EWP, that's when you talk about they got the rock in place, and they go put the global field on it, uh, that's one I MS, that they give you a report on, and yeah, they come along, good on it.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, Carrie, you see, and about finding Andrew of the Williams and Peters, have heard anything, have heard anything? Okay, okay, Scott, you want to take on? You say your email right now? Okay, let me give us a bit of time, all right? Uh, another thing is the employees, vaccinations are here, uh, for the employees, for the food shots. Um, the dates are, we got a, a email from, uh, Bailey, the dates are October nineteenth at one o'clock to three o'clock P.M., and October twentieth at the same time, one o'clock to three o'clock P.M.
The nineteenth and twentieth?
Yes, nineteen and twenty.
And that'll be here?
That'll be here. That's the county employees.
No, it's separate.
It's gonna be a safer.
No, sanitation bill.
Sanitation.
Sanitation, not here.
Yeah, that's right. She used them up, he ain't doing, but.
Sanitation, yeah.
I'm just saying, I hear about her. It's gonna be awful at sanitation.
It's gonna be a sanitation deal.
You think it's hard for them to get door tag? Door tag, you did do it safely.
Yeah, they better, maybe he reach out to Bailey and maybe do it safely, or come back here to be, be all. Um, okay, also, I'd like to send out prayers for the, uh, and sympathy for the grounds and Washington family, for the loss of Curly Brown, who passed away last night. Um, he was a former employee of the Natchez Adams County Airport, and he's also a cousin of my spouse, my husband. Uh, he passed away last night, and that's all I have.
Supervisor.
Okay, the only thing I really had on my agenda today was to talk about the CARES Act money, and, uh, trying to get everybody on board with paying Adams County debt down by as much as we can, and understand that if we were, if I make a motion to do that, we have to hold out the five hundred and is it ten thousand dollars for Morgan Town Road, we'll leave it in reserve.
Correct, five hundred and ten thousand dollars. Probably want to ask your financial advisor as to, or what you should pay, and maybe. Probably want to ask your financial advisor as to for what you should pay and maybe want to wait until January, February before you spend money like that. If it's passed, I'm not telling you to do it. I know one.
I do have a list of the uh debt services there. Yeah, the amounts, the the plus the interest. So I would just get them typed up and just send to each supervisor so they can view which ones that they want to uh you all want to uh apply the money to. My recommendation would be uh in my opinion, that we need we need to just first find out exactly the results of the email that Scott just sent out concerning the financial handles because we don't know what we're going to we need to apply on that. So we probably should wait on that answer first.
Mr. President, I I want. Yeah, so what you saying is if if we don't get reimbursed for that, then we gonna have to pay it. You know that.
We've already paid it, right? It's just we don't have it in general funds anymore. We need fun is is in the negative and it has to come out of the negative. General funds is in the negative?
No. That's fallen.
That's fine.
And it can't stay away. So we're expecting a revenue to come in to apply to the negative and if.
It does not. Then we gonna have to take a lot of money from the general funds.
Whatever the difference is of what's paid or not, we have to refer to the general.
So that's that's the reason why, you know, I just say we don't have to.
And you say you do have something on all the debt service that we have?
I do have a list of the debt services. They are plus the interest, the balance. And so I just give each one.
Just just with quick math, can you tell everybody how much we're paying a month in interest alone?
Well, we don't pay by the month.
You can break it down by.
I can break it down, yeah.
Or you can do it by the year. I can break it down by the month.
Yes, I can. I can do that. But I spreadsheet it, I did it throughout the duration of what's left. And I can still break it down by the year.
The uh the thing is, we've got the money in the bank right now. We're drawing what a half a percent interest?
On.
On on the money in the bank.
Uh huh.
And we're paying five five percent or more. Some of them are more, some of them are a little less on the money owed by Adams County. So while it looks like we're gaining money, we are a little bit, but we're still throwing, I don't know. Do you think it's thirty thousand dollars a month? Would that be a fair assessment? Not on the five million or six million. I'm talking total debt that the county has.
And I'm not weighing in on any type of discretion just for the paper correct. The way that your debt service does, you you actually assess a mileage to pay that debt service. It's, you know, we have set aside money to pay whatever that amount is and we do that each each time annually. Um, not again, I'm not trying to say one way or the other.
I I understand. I'm just, I always look at this and anything I do is is in a business format. Like if you are always borrowing money or you have debt, you are never in the clear and you you continually throwing money away. And in this case, it's the Adams County taxpayers' money. It's not my money. It's not Weston's money. It's not Warren's money or Ricky's or yours. It belongs to the taxpayers and we are wasting it. And I I think this is the the best opportunity we may ever see to knock a huge chunk out of our debt and 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 free up money in the process, which is should be another important factor here. If we're freeing up forty or fifty thousand dollars a month to the general fund, then we don't, we're not always trying to nick and dime people to death because we freed up all this money by getting rid of all this debts. So you all we don't want to wait on that motion.
I I agree with you.
No, I.
You know, but I'm just, I'm looking at, I'm still in my mind.
When you send out the sheet to everyone, could you make sure that the interest rate is attached to each of those?
I will.
All right, first, I'm actually, um, I know you responded to them, well, a couple days ago, you sent out emails to them also.
I sent.
Later. Last meeting, we talked about the Williams and Peters too. And you have not heard anything back on on that?
They didn't respond to it, but it wasn't anything.
So how much are we in arrears on the later?
One point six. Well, we spent one point eight approximately. Correct me if I'm wrong. That means our grants approximately one point six payback.
But we've already paid it.
We paid it. We're hoping to.
So where is the debt at now?
It's a debt. It's an internal debt that we owe to the general fund.
One point six.
We project that we get a revenue back to pay that. That's part of your, when you made your budget, you projected we're gonna get paid one point six million dollars back.
We haven't seen that yet.
Yeah, we do the same projections for a lot of other things and grants and so forth.
I'm sitting here thinking, okay, but we keep pushing this down the road and and every month we've lost another seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars in interest to debt service. Uh, and we just keep pushing it and we're we're digging the hole even deeper and we're making this this money even less valuable by doing that. Um, so what is what is the answer? Is the answer that you hold the five hundred thousand dollars out for Morgantown and then a one one point five million out for the general fund or do we go ahead and pay the general fund back and if we get the money, we pay that on debt?
The general fund's been used to supplement and then supplement it. You wouldn't you wouldn't want to use that funds until you have a plan in place as to what you want to do with those funds because it there's certain grants that are out there that do include Harper money, not just the ones we talked about. Like you can stretch your dollar more doing that kind of stuff.
Such as?
So until you commit to doing X, Y, and Z. Such as, well, I mean, a lot of it has to do with infrastructure like this, you know, internet, uh, you know, utilities, things of that nature.
You see, our tax settlements are outfalling the these settlements. So we have to, we we need that to keep the people.
I'm just asking y'all, what is the answer to settle that problem? If or when, they they send the money or or they don't send the money? How do we do this and not, we're sitting there like to say, we're drawing a half a percent interest on the five or six million dollars, whatever it is, is it six million?
Five point nine.
Five point nine.
Let's call it six million, okay. We're drawing a half a percent interest on it. Okay, but we're paying five percent on all the money we owe. And it's 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 kinda silly actually, when when you think about it. But um why wouldn't you pay it down?
Just president, um, what I think we need to do, to be honest with you, uh, we need as a board to determine how much of the five point nine we are gonna spend toward debt service. Cause I know we not gonna spend all, I'm not gonna vote to spend it all toward debt service, but majority of them probably gonna go toward debt service. I I don't think it's a good idea to spend all the money toward debt service when when um especially when having been to conferences and they tell us how we can make an impact to help some people in our communities that really need some help. Now, the kind of money, I'm talking about helping these people is is not no money. Ain't talking no million dollars. I ain't even talking about that. It ain't even gonna come up to a million dollars, I don't think. So if if as a board, if we can say, well, out of the four, out of the five point nine, we gonna take this a four million dollars toward debt service. And then we got some more money we can deal with to do whatever we got to do in there. And and by the time we do that, we might gonna have some more left over and we can use that toward debt service, but you still gotta try to help somebody.
Well, this this helps everybody because it it we pay down the Adams County debt, which we all owe. Every citizen in Adams County owes this money. Oh, it's kinda like the national debt, you know? Every citizen in the United States owes about three hundred thousand dollars towards the national debt. Now, I don't know about you, but I don't want to send a check for three hundred thousand dollars to the national debt service because they're they're wasting our money anyway. But at any rate, so where do we go from here, Scott? Any ideas?
Yeah.
How we need to structure this? We we kinda need a plan because we're continually wasting people's money uh by not doing something.
Now, I'm saying digging this out here and get it all over with. That's all we got to do. Then we gonna start going way up.
I I don't I don't think that hearing with, you know, a hundred and fifty people showing up telling, everybody telling us what they need. We were elected to take care of the county and its money.
The board would need to do that and then you probably want to get your financial advisor to go help you go through and pick which ones, make the most financial, give give you the most financial savings. The board would need to say that's the direction they want to go and then.
Our financial advisor.
And probably predict that you're around game where that's where you're probably gonna try to do.
Because right now, we have two debt services that's gonna be paid off this year. We have two that's gonna be paid out this year.
But you talking about like December thirty first or you talking about?
Physical year, physical year, right? Cause most time, you know, me and my child, the.
But we're still paying high rates of interest on that money.
It's just gonna be a one, it's gonna be a one time interest, one time interest.
All right, when you say financial advisor, you're talking about Angie taking care of that or is there somebody else that's?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can send this to them and say, look, this is what we need to do.
Not me.
That would save. Okay. I want I want to see that. I want to see that done.
That's why I think we need the sheet. Everybody can see the debt service, see see what the balance is, what the interest rate is. I think everybody can study that and then we'll talk to Dandy.
Look, I'm gonna make a Republican out of Rick Dray. He's actually offering to pay down debt service. I'm so proud of you. Okay, so I'm not gonna make a motion. We're gonna do what we're gonna turn it, take the debt service, turn it over to Dandy and figure out what we can do. Is that right, Scott? Wes? Are you still laughing over there? You wearing red today? Yes, I think I'm through.
And I just uh, I'm ready to have a report for why I do want to um get permission again I passed the act, uh, but just in case, um, cause I know we gonna have another board meeting. Robyn had a trumpet tree last year and I know we anything like that happening for our neighborhood that I just want to make sure it's clear that they can use a park like they did last year. I don't know if we had to do that, uh, because I know we have in a different area. I'm pretty much sure that they will. I think they have one in Pine Mountain, uh, this little small thing, trumpet tree for for the kids. I don't know exact names, but I did get a call from them and I hadn't had a call from the residents of Robyn yet. Um, but that 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 didn't end my report.
Okay, I have a couple of things. Um, Chucky is in the conference and so she's asked that I do reports for today. Um, she's asking that the procurement card for, I'm guessing it'd be September, needs to be spread across the minutes.
You heard her request? Question by Senator Wilson, can I get second? Second, Senator Wilson, great, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
The second item um she had was we received the invoice for the camera for the Nola camera for Robbins Lake. Uh, it's in the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. I just need to have approval from the board if that is y'all wishes and then I'll sign off to send it to the keeping for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve it, favor. Do you hear the second? Do or fear?
Everybody's on board.
Senator Johnson, can I get any second? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Um, third item we have is she has an updated list, which um our auditor um has requested that we continuously update the requisition clerk list um spread across the minutes to be applied to say audit and she sends it and she need to have the updated requisition clerk list spread across the minutes.
Motion by Senator Gaines, second by Senator Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
All right, the last item, um, on the fire services that you guys approved for the grant, um, she said there were two different options. The board approved paying for the equipment and um they'll be reimbursed for the grant. She has forwarded the quotes to Lynette. The quotes were in excess of seventy five thousand, so she needs to get permission from the board to advertise since it's in excess of seventy five thousand.
Motion by Senator Gaines, second by Senator Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
We are in the process of um working with the company, Dip Care Data, that we've worked with for our notices for tax redemption. And we've had really good success with sending out the postcards every year. Um, this money is in my budget, but I just need to have approval from the board to send out the, we sent it out the month of December for the postcards for delinquent taxes for the twenty twenty tax year. Just need approval from the board for that.
Motion by Senator Gaines, second by Senator Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Um, we had, Ms. Dale was doing a title opinion and brought to our attention and we've had this happen before. Uh, there was a chargeback placed upon a property after it was acquired. So the property was acquired by individuals in November of twenty twenty. The chargeback for the prior owner was placed upon the property in April of twenty twenty one and the law allows for the board to have that stricken since the person was not the owner and did not get notice. So we don't have the board's approval for that, please.
Motion by Senator Gaines, second by Senator Wilson, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I I don't know. I ain't even imagine this. Brandon looking at me funny. Go ahead.
It's legal.
And and I'll reference on the minutes when the deed was issued, when they acquired the property and then the notice was put in there, just said it'd be covered.
All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Okay, uh, we have the agreement for bringers to perform our twenty twenty one um audit and this is their engagement letter that they need to have signed off on. I believe it's by the president and Ms. King. Nope, myself and the president. Um, so just need to have this approved, uh, authorizing the president, myself to uh sign it and spread across the minutes.
You heard the question. Motion by Senator Hutchins, second by Senator Wilson, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Randy, could could they kind of come in and give us?
Yes, so what Scott and I have talked about, and I'm sorry, I'm glad you mentioned that because I was gonna have mentioned this because we such as brought up the last meeting. What our thought process was, they are rolling through these thankfully very quickly for us to try to get us back on track. So if you guys are okay with this, we're thinking have them wait until the twenty twenty one is completed. They can come in and talk to us about nineteen, twenty, and twenty one at the same time. I'm thinking within a month, in those two, we should have the twenty twenty one audit completed as well as that's on, okay?
Well, I mean, you could do it like that.
Okay.
But if you got findings in twenty and they don't correct them findings.
Right.
Then it's gonna be the same findings in twenty twenty one.
And and we have gone through those findings, you know, with the department heads and they they explained the elected officials and things like that and they've sent responses and the auditors happy with the responses that they could get. And so it looks like they're, like Chucky, for instance, has taken a real good brainstorming to actually actually address the problem, make sure it's fixed. Um, I shouldn't be more than a month or so the way they're working and I guess if the board wants to have them here, you certainly can do that. Our thought was let's put their attention on where it needs to be to get our audit out and then we can have a final, like I said, closing. And he has been down to discuss the audit personally and delivered the brigger's actual principal of the of the place came down personally to discuss it. And that and that discussed was just say, here it is and here's where we're at and here's what we're building.
You see what I'm saying? I don't want him to give us a twenty audit and then the twenty twenty one audit have some of the same findings on it.
You will have it. You're gonna have some of those because the twenty twenty ones are already.
It's too late. Right. Exactly.
But they will be, but since they'll have been addressed within the that year or within this year since the last one, they they kind of, sometimes they don't keep them on there. They say, well, you addressed it and they leave it all.
Well, I don't think, I hope they do because it don't look good if you got the same findings.
The last audit didn't have those same.
It didn't.
It was much better than the nineteen and then nothing was was changed.
And Ricky, David, when he came and handed deliver the nineteen, the twenty hardbound And Ricky David, when he came and handed over the nineteen, the twenty hardbound copies for the board, he actually brought this up and said, look, please let your board know, I'll be more than happy to come sit down and talk with y'all, just let me know when y'all are available and, and I will make myself available. So, so he's, he's on the same page and want to come visit the board as well, so.
But we want him to finish her. Spend the time, finish her audit, and then we'll talk to him about it. The next year's, or twenty-one's due long some past.
All in favor, all opposed, I said.
This has already been, um, signed up or approved by the board through the docket process to pay for the, the premium for the pool, um, for this year, and we're going to build the city for their half. But we got to be completed policy back, um, for our insurance, and we need to have that spread across the minutes, please.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Insurance policy on the pool, all in favor, all opposed, I said.
Um, the CHC Parks Office is going to start offering e-recording for their land instruments. It's no cost to the county, the cost is from the, um, person who's recording the deed in our office. All we have to do is just, um, have the contractor approved, they'll come do the training and software and everything, but again, no cost to the county at all. But I do have to have the contractor give them the approval and spread across the minutes, please.
Is that an additional fee? Or one is we're already paying for it?
So that's going to be for the end user, so say for instance, if there's a title attorney that's going to be recording these instruments, they can choose to either one, absorb the fee or two, they can pass it along to, to whoever your client is, so.
And what's that amount?
It's, so this is going to be, I think it's-
Per page?
No, it's actually per instrument, so I think it's four dollars per instrument, and they actually have different options. So I think you can do X number of instruments for a flat rate, or you can do it all for like four dollars an instrument, I think it is, so. But again, that, that's, you know, no cost to the county, that's on whoever the, uh, the provider, the, the attorney or whoever took the title work, um, they did the closing, they can pass it along, so.
Any new motion?
Please.
So moved.
Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
I can tell you that you go across the river, your instrument recordings are a lot more expensive, like four or five hundred dollars versus you see that, it's only thirty bucks.
And I don't feel like we'll probably have a lot of like, well, they'll choose this, I think you're going to have the, the bigger outfits that are international or national companies that are going to use this.
Yeah, global guys can start to churn across. So think local.
That's right.
All, all in favor, all opposed, I said.
Um, I need to have the September, uh, tax redemption settlement for twenty twenty-two spread across the minutes, please.
Heard your question, change it, or? Motion by supervisor Gaines, second, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, I said.
Um, the only bond we have for renewal for November is Catherine less Worthway, we need to have that spread across the minutes, please.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, I said.
I think I just have, I want to play this, she's, she's not on the table. Um, so there, she had a, an MOU on the helping hands. Um, it appears that there was a modification in the amount. The board approved the MOU for thirty-five thousand. And it needs to be twelve thousand is my understanding, but again, I, I was thinking that play was-
So we overpay somebody?
I'm not sure.
We need to get this right.
So y'all just want me to hold this one off until next meeting, or is it community? I sent her an email, but, but I haven't heard back from her, so I'll just hold this off until next meeting.
And overpaid, your contractor overstated.
Yeah, well.
And I think, I think it's all right.
Got a couple of items to be determined, unfortunately, um... I sent out a, based on supervisor Gaines' motion, I sent out a draft, uh, form, uh, for a budget increase request, for y'all's review and comments to change it, to see if that's includes what all you're trying to do. Um, I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at it because it was late last week, maybe Thursday or Friday. We'll print it out and send it all over to you, see if you have what you're talking about. Yes, ma'am, I put it in everyone's box. What's that? There's a form that a supervisor, y'all decided that we would have a kind of, if you're at, any departments come and ask them for more money, that they have a form and a meeting that they fill out.
Yeah, yeah.
And meet with the supervisor, me, if you want me to be there, you know, for legal reasons, I shouldn't be there. And, and that be approved, uh, and, and discussed before coming for the board so that we have a little bit better information, so that Angie can understand, make sure the pricing asking is correctly and all that kind of stuff. So we're not blindsided and so Angie's not blindsided, or I'm not blindsided, all because, because all of us get that engagement. That's difficult for us to get you good advice if, if we don't have it. It's, but I want you to look at it that way, you can say which, what you need to have in there as well, it just needs to have. I sent it to her, but I don't, I don't know if she got it checked, well, and she was off a lot last week too, so, you know. Hopefully they approve your lead. The uh, tax collector has sent over overdue taxes for personal properties. Um, in the past, during this time, we have tried to pursue our own collection or efforts before sending it over to a third party. Um, oftentimes, you can send out a letter and the taxpayer will pick up the phone and call you and set up some sort of payment situation. So it's been real effective, not that expensive for you or the taxpayer. I would like your permission to go ahead and do all that again, if that's okay with the board. I have a list of personal property taxes, if y'all want to see them what they are. They are more than what, you know, we anticipated. Um, and I think because of one particular taxpayer, who in the past has come to delinquent and we contacted them and they've gotten back on track. So I think look for that to be, and usually we just address literally a higher ones and the ones we know are solvent, just say, hey, look, you're trying to work with them. If you hand it to a third party, if they're out of state and auto marks, automatic fifty percent penalty and, and so forth, so, um, if that's okay with the board?
So.
Motion by supervisor Gaines, second, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Yeah, if there's any, if it doesn't get the traction that we want, we can always file suit before sending it to a third party too, and sometimes that's what we have to do, very, very occasionally, that's what we have to do.
All in favor, all opposed, I said.
The, I, I got direction from supervisor, from, from the supervisors regarding Moretown Road, so I'm going to request Toby to come and give us the finalization of our plan. Is there any objections to any of that?
Yeah, we don't do part of that.
That was the delay, I, I was going to ask it one way or the other, but I think it's, they're not issue anymore by any supervisors. Uh, last week, a person came and asked for an appropriation for the light show, I did send an email this morning about it, didn't get a chance to get to it sooner than that. So if y'all read your email, I don't know when the show is, is it coming up before the next board meeting?
I can check.
Was it around Christmas time or was it?
I think it's in November.
The lady in the chain.
It's like our exhibit light show, really, even if we don't have to pay for it.
We're trying to figure out if we legally could.
You said we can legally do it or we cannot?
I think we can if, if, if the board is comfortable with the findings that you would make, which I don't think you would be uncomfortable necessarily making.
If you read it, it's pretty like, it's more supportive.
What we can do, I'll print-
For the county?
Yeah. I'll print the email off, guys, but it's October number eleven, so we have a board meeting before that.
I don't know if we had, had a round, may I ask for a round, did they?
They didn't, but.
No.
It wasn't a set amount.
Oh, she didn't say a set amount.
You just said ask.
She said ask.
Well, we have a board meeting before that, if y'all want to look at it, if it gives you a certain comfort, we certainly can do that.
Go ahead, first board meeting.
November eighth, seven.
We come to our board meeting, yes, the second.
Seven.
Oh, so when we do it, it's called a name.
Seven.
When we do the coverage, first we do.
Yeah, the rest is, I didn't speak, it's it.
Okay.
Uh, one last thing for you, Scott. Do we need to make a motion to turn this CARES Act deal over to Dandy to review it, so it's actually?
I was going to turn it over to just our debt service, getting mask and his input on that, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we, you know, some of what we are going to do, not-
No decision's been made at all, I'm just going to turn it over to him to get his input in, just like you asked for to print some stuff out.
Okay. We should, we should know that by the next board meeting.
Are you still not?
Have some ideas.
Um, I am. Okay. And we said, but, uh, the, uh, both snow already have our balances on our debt service, so I had to send that to him last week. So he already, he's already up there, but the balance is.
Speaking of Germany.
Yeah, that one was supposed to take off on the two-week vacation starting at one o'clock today. Ooh, that's a quick notice.
Where are we going?
Going to the house, to clean up my house and sweep.
Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed.
In a motion, can we call you if we need you?
Who's in charge?
I'll be, well, the problem is, I'm taking this off because this is our year end, we have to do, I have to do my cash balances for October the first, get everything straight, so I want to do a vacation, so I won't have to be distracted by I, I don't want any distractions.
If she doesn't take lead time off, then this audit starts getting mad at her when she tries to turn her time to retire.
All right.
So I'll be here, but I will be here.
She'll, um, I'm going to go ahead and get approval from this past one, she had ten, seven, to ten, ten, sixteen hours vacation time, so can we include that in your motion, supervisor Gray? Second, all in favor, all opposed, I said. But I'll get it.
Thanks, I'll get it.
There's something in here, Pretty Girls With Brains, A Platform For Greatness, Greatness Kickoff Campaign, Reconnect The Youth, Sheriff, Special Guarding Issues Affect Young People, Issues With Teen Depression, Suicide, Teen Bullying And Cultural Bias, uh, Sunday, October sixteenth, four P M. At Jack White Park in front of Seven The Cage Street. Uh, there is a new hire. Temp, it says Title Temp For Dietress Hayes. Towanda Carradine, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by supervisor Wilson, can I get second? Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, I said. There is a new hire, telecommunicator, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four, nine, sixty, Jane. Coach Heiser. Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, I said. And a Samuel Thomas, apartment one fifty-one, new hire, custodian, twelve dollars an hour, twenty-four, nine, sixty. Can I get a motion? Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, I said. Um, also wanted to ask about, uh, we tried to set up a meeting last week to have a discussion with Courtney Parrish, uh, as far as contracting out, sheriff wanted to wait until after. So, uh, we'll try to schedule that for next couple, hopefully next week. This is about to be over this week?
Yeah, it's going to be over this week, I, I really want the supervisor to be engaged and, oh, we talk to them, I'd like plus to meet.
Okay.
Ask us a question, I'd like plus to meet, we'll agree whoever y'all want to meet with.
Then we'll set up, uh, a meeting for the following week.
You want to meet with all supervisors off?
Whoever, whoever's going to be, it will be nice to be solid, not like you, all of y'all.
So we can, you can do that at the second session.
We clear that out and everything.
That's right.
You can do that at the second session.
Okay.
Today. We have to be after.
Not today.
It's followed, uh, Blue Shot's location has been moved to the safe room. Same date, same time, county board has moved to the safe room. Uh, I want to thank all those involved in the balloon race this weekend, volunteers, sponsors, um, and the balloon pilots who came to town. I think they had great weather, great success, and it's great for our community. Um, Recreation Bond, did you say last meeting that, uh, Chucky is looking at equipment?
I got mine, I got all of mine, she got, she sent me a-
So we need to get with her?
Yeah, she sent me a email of bonds.
I was under the impression that she was looking for everything.
Yeah, I was under the impression that we was going to use the guy to look at debt.
Yeah, that's what she went by, I gave her my information, y'all have to give her the information to the guy, because she has to, to get prices, see, he can't do that, but she has to get the prices. So I just gave her the information that he gave me.
From that?
From that thing. And then she went by that, and then she got in touch with him, but she did get in touch with him too, they did it together, I put it like that.
Oh, that was all I had, I think. So I need a motion for I to be determined.
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, all opposed, I said.